Good morning. It is 10:00 AM on February 28, 2023. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda? Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
So, aye. Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If you are here to discuss the Ames Urban Fringe, I'll just ask you to hold your comments until then. Anyone who would like to make public comment on anything else on today's agenda, you can step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing no one step forward, we'll close public comment number one and move to consideration of proclamation recognizing March 2023 as Problem Gambling: Gambling Awareness Month for Story County. Supervisor Headens, would you like to start?
Certainly. Whereas the National Council on Problem Gambling and the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services and Community and Family Resources has designated March 2023 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month. Whereas problem gambling is a public health issue affecting millions of Americans of all ages, races, and ethnic backgrounds. Whereas problem gambling has a significant societal and economic cost for individuals, families, businesses, and communities.
Whereas problem gambling is treatable and treatment is effective in minimizing this harm to both individuals and society as a whole. Whereas numerous individuals, professionals, and organizations have dedicated their efforts to the education of the public about problem gambling and the availability and effectiveness of treatment.
And whereas the National Council on Problem Gambling, the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services and Community and Family Resources invite all residents of Story County, Iowa to participate in Problem Gambling Awareness Month. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to support the National Council on Problem Gambling, the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services, and Community and Family Resources in their efforts to mitigate gambling-related harm through Iowa and across the nation. I move the proclamation.
Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Headens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Do we have someone here for a photo? Go ahead and do that now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And then we'll get a copy to you, okay? Okay, now moving to, we have no agency reports. Consideration of minutes from February 17, 2023, special minutes. Minutes from February 21, 2023, and the canvas minutes from February 2022. February 22, 2023.
I move approval of the February 17th, 21st, and 22nd of 2023 special minutes, minutes, and canvas minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Headens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Consideration of claims. Pardon?
I had the easy one on that. I didn't.
Consideration of claims.
Move approval of claims as submitted.
Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Headens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Consent agenda.
I move approval of consent agenda items as listed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Headens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Moving to public hearing items. We have consideration of the advertisement to bid for Story County Human Services Center HVAC Equipment Replacement. Good morning.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Morning.
Here again to talk about the HSC HVAC equipment. We kind of sat down and revised the scope a little bit to see if we can reduce that cost. Because back in December, as we all know, we received one bid on it and it was significantly over budget. So I'll just kind of summarize what the changes were that we made and why, and then we can get into some questions. So start with on a, on the original bid, there was an extensive amount of cabling that was involved in putting in the new units so that we could hook them up to our building automation system. And we originally put that in the bid because of the workload of the Facilities Management Department. Because it's something we would normally do in-house. But after talking with, because Harold Pike Construction provided the original bid and we were able to discuss further detail with him on where some of that cost come from. And one of the areas we found was there was a significant amount of labor dollars for the pulling of that cabling. So we pulled that off out and intend to do that in-house with Facilities Management staff. And that, we estimate that could be between $80,000 and $100,000 worth of cost savings. So that was a big no-brainer one for us there. So, and then this one, we weren't intending on, but with speaking with the mechanical contractor who bid the project, for Harold Pike, the demo of the old cabling, there was a lot of labor hours that they had included in there, thinking that that was part of the bid, which wasn't our intent. So we cleaned up a little bit of that language so that it was clear that it wasn't part of the bid scope. So that could be another $30,000, $40,000 worth of costs that were in the original bid that we weren't intending to be there. And then the last thing, we would, up on the top floor, we were adding some equipment in semi-preparation for something, some projects that might happen down the road. And we felt that, given the cost of the equipment and how much over budget we were on the project, that just replacing the equipment that needs to be replaced is probably the more appropriate way to go. And that could be another $40-ish thousand worth of savings. And then we did do this with one alternate bid, and that is to not do, equates to 11 heat pump units and they're all of one size. And that is kind of a more of a last resort. If we had to meet a price, those are ones we, I felt that we could eliminate and do it a later time as they, if and when they failed. Because there's a certain amount of equipment that we need, that needs replaced right now because it's down and not operational. And then other equipment that, it was a size that basically got everything that needed replaced replaced, but is also a size that we are still able to get replacement parts for if we had to limp it along. But that's more of a, if we had to settle, that was why we included that alternate bid.
Yeah, we looked at a couple of different ways to try and do that or trying to break out an alternate. You know, we looked at trying to do it by floor. Well, there was issues with that, that, well, some need replaced on all three floors. We liked to do it by department and that was same kind of consideration. No matter what we came into, it was, we were hit and miss on what we were getting to accomplish. So this seemed like the cleanest way, just to pull out the smallest unit or one of the smallest units across the board and.
Yeah, that are more readily available too. Like, so if you needed to buy them one at a time. And we also didn't want to make it so complicated that people weren't understanding what the so far scope was for the project. So. So I mean, we didn't provide a full-on cost estimate like we did back in November because I felt that with what we've determined the labor charges were, it come in at $800,000. I feel we can be in the $600,000 range, actual bids coming in. And then just like before, you know, putting it out for bid, we're not committed to anything. So we can always, the bids come in super high. We can have that conversation like we had before.
Questions? I think my only question would be where you talked about the, maybe doing the heat pumps at a later date. Would that, would you have any kind of supply issues if you waited versus doing them earlier in the project? You know, like if something would break down and, gosh, now I have to wait.
Yes, we, I would anticipate we'd most definitely run into delays because we already are looking at, you know, probably close to 50 weeks to complete the project if we accepted a bid. So if we had a unit go down, I mean, that's why we're holding out on some of the ones because none of them are in critical areas. So we have some that just aren't running because they have a nine-month lead time on replacement parts if we can even get the material. That's the other problem we run into. So, yeah.
I just wanted to be clear on that for consideration.
For sure. Yes, it's a good question because it will affect it.
I have no other questions.
No questions?
Need a motion?
It's a public hearing. I don't have any other questions, but just thank you. I know that was a lot to go back through and kind of pull all of that out and figure out where changes could be made to make it more doable.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so after no further questions, we will open public hearing. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step to the podium. Seeing no one wishing to make public comment, we'll close public hearing and I will entertain a motion.
Okay. I move we advertised bid for the Story County Human Services Center HVAC Equipment Replacement as presented with the changes.
Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Headens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I look forward to hearing from you.
Again, I think we're four weeks from today. We'll be back.
All right, moving to additional items. We have discussion and consideration for Iowa One Call Locates Contract Between Story County and Communication Innovators. We have someone from IT. I think Alyssa's gone to see if she can find Barb. We can move to the next one. Next item, consideration of sending max tax levy proposal for publication for public hearing on March 21st, 2023.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Pretty much the budget season that never ends this year. So the first requirement to posting our, or proposing our budget is to a max levy notice of proposed property tax levy. It's called the max levy notice. The public hearing for that will be on March 21st after I published and we have the days that are necessary. I did, I was able to, thanks to Rhonda's rock star work, go ahead and get the new valuations put into this max property tax levy, which originally, I didn't know if I'd have them, but I went ahead and did it. Overall, the valuations did increase 1.15% for countywide and 2.18% for rural. So we do have a little more valuation than we had last year. Not much. Okay? The rates that we're proposing don't show up here. This notice is absolutely, from my perspective, confusing at best. However, the rates that we're looking at for the budget, the general fund or the general levy will be $4.50 again this year. And the unincorporated will be $7.47 going forward with this budget proposal. So I'm just going to ask for your approval to go ahead and send it so we can start the process. Right now I have an actual public hearing for the FY24 budget scheduled for April 11. If we, we can move that back if we need to, but that's what we're on track for right now is an April 11th public hearing for the budget.
When you gave the two percentages, you said 1.15% and what was the other one?
2.18.
How does that correlate to the 7.07?
Because it's comparing tax dollar asking, tax dollar asking.
It's confusing.
Very confusing. This thing really doesn't tell me, tell anyone anything as far as I'm concerned, but it's a new code requirement. So we will do a second public hearing. If your, if your valuations raise at all, you're going to have a higher percentage.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Lisa. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of sending the max levy proposal for publication for public hearing for March 21st, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Headens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. We will kind of walk backwards a little bit to discussion and consideration for Iowa One Call Locates Contract. Hi.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I am so sorry. I thought we put this on the consent agenda, but I can talk about it. So we currently contract with USIC. And what they do is when there's a proposed digging or something in an area where we have fiber, we get an email and we have to submit our SBILTS, which are maps of our network. And recently, we haven't been receiving them in time. And there was a fiber cut in front of Ames City Hall a couple of months ago that they missed. So we've reached out to Communication Innovators, who has done most of our network tiling and digging. And so this contract will replace the one we have with USIC. And what Communications Innovators will do, instead of Iowa One Call sending us the request, they will take care of all the tickets. They'll be on site when there's the dig. They'll pretty much own the project and keep us out of it. And to me, that, that's worth it rather than getting a fiber cut and getting something missed. Sometimes the tickets don't reach us until the day before they're ready to dig.
So the way it worked before is you would get notified by One Call and have to let them know where our fiber was? I just want to make my understanding.
Yeah, and then we would have to send the maps and everything to USIC, which didn't make sense. I mean, why we couldn't deal with them directly? Because they're the ones that were probably contracting the diggers. We never know who's going to dig. And we don't really know, when they send us the map, it's a huge area and we have to figure out where our fiber is and then send them the map that corresponds. Sometimes we don't know. And like the one in front of City Hall, that got missed. And it wasn't our fault. It was USIC. They just never showed up or never, they didn't tag the line correctly because that's what they do. They go out and tag it.
Okay.
And I think you've seen the different colored flags, blue, orange, yellow. So what Communications Innovators would do, they'll do all of that for us.
How will they get notified earlier than you do though? How will they have more time?
They, well, this is what they do for a living. And they would get the notification from Iowa One Call instead of having it go to us and then go back. It would take us out of the loop. And they would notify us after it was done. And a lot of times, and, and when we called them with the fiber cut, they already knew what was going on and that there was going to be some construction there. So, because that's what, and part of it was, they were involved in some of it. So it helps when you have somebody that knows your network and knows what's going on. And, and the cost would be pretty similar. Right now, we're getting, we're getting charged per incident from USIC. And with Communication Innovators, it would just be an annual fee. So we could come out ahead or behind depending on what construction was going on during the year.
What do we usually pay?
$250 per call.
And how many calls in the last year?
There's probably been 10 or 15. But that doesn't count their time. That's just per call. So there's always an additional charge. And then they have the monthly fee.
So would they have the mapping that you just referenced of where the fiber is? Are you still going to have to provide that?
They are the ones that created those and gave them to us. So they have them, which makes sense to me that they would do, they would respond to the Iowa One Calls. So it's really just trading one service for the other and this one would be more efficient.
How long is the contract?
It's just one year.
One year.
I have no further questions.
I have no further questions.
None either.
Yeah, again. So.
I would move approval of the Iowa One Call Locates Contract Between Story County and Communication Innovators, $5,879 annually for one year.
Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Headens.
Aye.
Basil, aye.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have discussion and consideration of federal aid agreement with City of Maxwell and Iowa Department of Transportation for bid, bridge project. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Darren.
Good morning.
I wanted to bring this to you. It's not something we normally do. I don't know if we've ever done this before. So I wanted to make sure the Board was clear on what was going on with this agreement. This is the bridge grant we got, City Bridge Grant. So fortunately, I wasn't sure how much the DOT was going to let the county take over the administration and everything, but it looks like they're going to do that. And that's kind of spelled out in the agreement because the city doesn't really have the staff to take care of all the administrative parts. So that's essentially what the agreement does. This is to replace two bridges. I recently got answers from the DOT on two questions. One was only one of the bridges technically qualified for this program, but the two bridges are 15 feet apart. So you almost have to replace the other bridge. So the DOT finally did agree. They will pay for both bridges. So that is 100%, they will do both bridges and they're both 100% funded, which is kind of rare. Usually it's like 80/20, but this City Bridge Program is now 100% funded. So that's good. The only costs, there will be no cost to the City of Maxwell at all. So make that clear. The only cost to the county is design cost. That's something that's already under contract because I was anticipating this. I wasn't anticipating it happened quite so soon. As they're ramping up the design speed here, getting that going. So that's already under contract. We'll have some soil borings at some point. That'll be $10,000 to $15,000 and maybe some archaeology study costs. But that will be the only cost to the county other than project inspection administration, which will all be done in-house. So that won't really be an additional cost to the county. Part of the agreement says we do have to come up with a cost sharing agreement with the city. And I hope to get that done by the end of this week. And I'll have the city sign off on that first, where I'm having you sign off on this agreement first. And then I plan to hand deliver it to the city by the end of the week for their council meeting next Tuesday. It's Monday or Tuesday, the 6th, whatever the 6th falls on. If I can have the cost sharing agreement drafted by then, maybe they can approve it and then I'll bring it back. But what that'll say is essentially, there will be no cost to the city for this and the county will take care of any additional costs. And the other question the DOT was if we can use our foreign-to-market account to cash flow the project. And because it's on a foreign-to-market route, they will allow us to do that. I wasn't sure since the city, it's a city program. So what that does is it's a reimbursement program. So they'll take the money out of our foreign-to-market account. And then the federal funds will reimburse our foreign-to-market account. So we won't have to budget any local dollars for this. So that's, that's good as well. We'll talk about that a little bit this afternoon in our five-year program meeting, how it's important to have a little leeway in our foreign-to-market account for these type of situations. And some of the other grants, these federal grants, I discussed, we're having issues with where to come up with the money originally to get reimbursed. But if we can use our foreign-to-market account, that makes it very easy. That is everything. Any questions about the agreement at all? It's pretty straightforward, but I wanted to make sure you're clear on what we're agreeing to.
Is this within the city of Maxwell?
They own to the center line of the road, which is the north half of both bridges and the county owns the south half of both bridges. So it's 50/50.
Gotcha.
And it looks like there's an estimate of $800,000.
Correct.
And the contract calls for up to $1.5 million?
Yes.
So that means if we have overruns, there's room.
Yes.
So that was my concern is if.
We're not real far along with the design. The reason the design's difficult is because it's in a flood, a detailed flood insurance study. And this one is more important than most because it, it would backwater into the city limits where there's housing. So we got to make sure it's designed properly. So the length of the bridge has not been determined yet. So it could vary some, but shouldn't be a lot. Eight hundred should be a pretty good estimate.
So if it's over 800, then the county eats that, that right?
I think we can go up to the 1.5 million.
Okay.
It's clause six on top of page two.
Yeah, I don't see any reason we should get anywhere close to that. But I'll bring it back if, if estimates get out of hand for some reason.
And when you were talking about the cost, the county would incur, what was your estimate there?
Just for soil borings, $10,000 to $15,000. Archaeology could be $1,000 to $2,000. And then the design's already under contract. That's usually $40,000 to $50,000 per bridge on those.
So for about $60,000 to $70,000, we get half of two new bridges. That's not bad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The city was probably never going to spend money on these. So we were going to have to replace them anyway. So it's pretty much 100% would have been our cost in the future.
Yeah, I think it's reasonable.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it's great. Good job. I know there was a lot of work that went into working with the city and figuring out how to get that done. So.
Well, and the fact that you're getting both bridges.
Yes.
That can carry out. That's.
And then it's not going to cost Maxwell anything.
Yeah.
That's.
That's important.
Yeah. Hey, any further questions for Darren?
No.
I move approval.
Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Headens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Thanks, Darren. Next, we will move to discussion and consideration of Cooperators' Response to Board of Supervisors December 12, 2022 Letter Requesting Changes to the Draft Ames Urban Fringe Plan and Direction to Finalize Plan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Let's see. First off, I apologize. I thought you were on.
I thought so too.
I brought a copy of Gilbert's letter.
Thank you.
We did, we haven't received it. Broke this down. So I'm going to clarify what it says. Okay. Okay. So this, this morning is an update. You've requested changes and now Ames and Gilbert have both responded to those. So I'm updating you on where we're at in terms of agreeing and where we're not in terms of not agreeing. And if you choose to move forward with, you know, basically what's been offered, then we would. Then we would, if you're not approving the plan this morning, we'd edit it. Create a separate twenty eighty agreement and have public hearings. And I'll talk more about that schedule here in just a minute. Um. So again, on the background here, Ames took action in January. Um, Gilbert took action in February on your requests. Um, they Ames did agree to remove some more of the urban reserve overlay between one eightieth and one ninetieth. To create basically a quarter mile buffer between them and Gilbert. Um, and they also acted to remove the urban reserve overlay over a portion of the area southwest of Ames. Um. They did not agree to all of your requests. Um, they did indicate that it was a final offer. Um, and the vote was four two on those. Um, so with that knowledge of this being a final offer. Um, that's kind of where the staff memo and this is presentation. That's the angle. These are coming. This this information is coming from, you know, if if the board wants to give me direction on a third option besides move forward with the changes. Or discontinuing the update process, you can. I just need that direction. Um, and I will also note that if we do choose to finalize with what's been offered. Um, that Ames would go first and have its public hearings before the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. And then it would come to our city council. I'm sorry, our Board of Supervisors and Planning and Zoning Commission after. Um, so we would notify again prior to those public hearings and Ames would go first.
And is it possible, don't, I don't wanna interrupt, but is it possible that at? At the future public hearings to finalize that? Let's say the city of Ames is listening to comments at that public hearing and decide to make a change. Is that?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So the public hearing, again, it's it's required when we're amending this kind of plan, right? And so they would have a a public hearing with public comments and they could, you know, they would go first. And then if they made changes, we would go second and consider those. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
You said they would do that? They agreed to that?
Yes.
Okay. Pardon me. Just wanna make sure.
Yep, yep. Um. So again, the alternatives I'm presenting this morning and the information I'm presenting this morning are for this, from this lens of this being a final offer from the city. But again, you can give me other direction. I just didn't know what else to do at this point. So here we are. Um, and I think really the crux of your decision, and I said this in the staff memo, is at this point. The board has requested a lot of changes and gotten Ames to move significantly. And without a plan. If we choose not to finalize, we wouldn't be getting some of those benefits. And so we have to weigh, do the benefits and the limitations on certain areas of on annexation. Um. That you've requested and that you've gotten have been conceded. Does that outweigh the remaining limitations? Um, so staff's recommendation is accepting the changes at this point, understanding that again, that this is a final offer. Um, again, we've seen significant changes made at the board's request. On the flip side, staff does understand and has heard the remaining concerns as well. Um, what we're looking at as staff is of course those concerns, but also we have broad goals. Um, in doing these kinds of cooperative agreements and and our goals include protecting the environment and agricultural land. But also allowing, you know, some growth to occur and balancing those issues. Um, and so I just wanted to recognize that, yes, there's conflicts, but we're seeking, we're seeking balance on some of these issues too. So it's, you know, a pretty nuanced um. Recommendation, understanding that there's these larger goals, and I'm gonna talk about some of those on the next slide. Um, so from the C two C plan, this is our vision. I'm sorry, it's hard to read. But when we adopted the C two C plan, this, the county had a vision for protecting natural areas and ag land and allowing growth. Um, and it also had a goal for intergovernmental coordination. And one objective related to that goal is to collaborate our plan boundaries, our C two C plan boundaries. Um, with the long-term growth plans of our cities, including through the fringe plan. So I just wanted to point out, that's kind of where we're coming from. We understand that there are benefits to coordinating. Um, so now I'm just gonna talk about some of the benefits of the plan that you all have secured. Through our continued negotiations. Um. So at this point, there's no ag, there's no annexation of agriculture and farm service areas. Um. And there's no involuntary annexations of rural residential or urban reserve areas. Um, on the flip side of that, if we didn't have a plan, Ames could accept annexations for any of those areas or involuntarily annex. A ben, another benefit of the plan is that we're going to be reviewing annexation requests. Um, for conformance with the plan. Um, that isn't secured without a plan that, you know, state code is a little vague in. What actions counties take, if any, when annexations come through. Um. And another benefit is we've now got a policy for sharing information on environmentally sensitive areas when an annexation is proposed. Um, and Ames is adopting our environmentally sensitive areas mapping through the plan. Um, and again. That wouldn't occur without a plan. Regarding land divisions, um, we've got clear policies for when and where land divisions are allowed. I know there are a lot of limitations, but on the flip side, without a plan. You know, cities are going to be, or Ames or any city, reviewing all divisions and boundary line adjustments even within two miles. And I looked into Ames's code just to confirm here. But when they review those divisions within two miles, they can require full of city infrastructure standards. And if those can't be met, they could be, could be denied. Or they could waive those, but if they waive those standards, then they will require an agreement to annex voluntarily. In the future from that property owner, as well as agreements not to protest the cost of hooking into city infrastructure. So we're by having policies in the plan that the county has sole review authority over these types of divisions. Preventing those types of situations. Um, with our policy that the county is the only one that reviews boundary line adjustments or reductions of lot size are allowed. Um. Next slide. And then these are just a few other benefits. So again, rural residential development, we've got an amendment process. Um, with standards for when it's allowed. If, you know, someone wants to do a lot division just once into two, they can go through this process. For us to consider it and for Ames to consider it without a plan. Again, Ames would still have review authority over these divisions. Um, and I was recently speaking with a developer and I think their main concern is, you know, without a plan, without a process. Will those all just get denied? We don't know. Um. And then just some broad last final benefits. It's a guide for future land use. It's transparent. Um, helps us make appropriate decisions about where to cite zoning districts and conditional uses, so we're not creating conflicts. Again, there are limitations. So one of the major factors that. Caused Ames to agree to limit itself in terms of where it could annex in January. Um, was limitations on conditional uses that you have offered. There's a list of condition uses, including shooting ranges and um, commercial wind projects. Um, that wouldn't be allowed. And we've agreed that we would amend our code. After the fringe plan was adopted to disallow those in urban reserve and urban growth areas. Um, that's a limitation on the county for sure. Um, to be aware of. I I would also point out, though, that um. I don't know if I've made this clear before. Those uses are only allowed in the A one agricultural district. So when we're looking at properties that have urban reserve on them, that are zoned agricultural residential. Such as the Champlin property or Meadow Glen. Um, then they couldn't apply for those conditional uses anyway. I'm sorry, could you go back? Um, and of course, there's concern about land divisions, right? And unfortunately. I don't think we're gonna have anything more flexible to allow those without a plan either. Because again, Ames has review authority within two miles. Um. It would require full city standards. Again, those would either need to be waived and an annexation agreement obtained. If it was allowed, but Ames's twenty forty plan, which is their comprehensive plan, also has policies that say. You know, when reviewing these division requests, a thirty-five acre lot size needs to be maintained. So. Divisions wouldn't, there's no real change in terms of how those divisions would be. Allowed or more flexibility for those without a plan either. Um, and I did also wanna note that I think there was some concern that by adopting the plan. You know, if a division were denied, there wouldn't be an appeal process or any recourse. Um, and that's not the case. You know, there's a section in state code. Um, in a meeting with Kim Christensen on on Friday that we went through, it's it's three fifty-four point ten that allows appeal after. Appeal to court after denial of a division. Um, so without a fringe plan, yes, if Ames denied a division, they could appeal to court. With a fringe plan, if Ames is the review authority and denies a division, that could still be appealed to court. If the county is the review authority and denied the division, that could be appealed to court against the county. So that right doesn't go away. You could still make a submittal and and we'd, you know, have to deny it if it didn't meet our policies, but that you, there is still an appeal process. Um, so now I'm gonna talk about some of the remaining issue areas. So these are. The areas that Ames didn't agree to change based on your requests. And again. This is background information. I'm not trying to um, argue or advocate here. I know that there's a lot of concerns and I've heard those and and wanted to just really dig in and and respond to those. So folks can better articulate what their concerns are and you all can make the most informed decision possible. Um, so I'm gonna start off with the southwest area. And and what you requested happen in that area in terms of mapping and and where we're at. So this map is from Ames's plan twenty forty. The hashed area is the urban reserve. And I've I've tried to call out the Champlin property, which is something we'll be talking about later on, as well as this area called Meadow Glen, which is a rural subdivision. But you can see when we developed the draft, this is the first version of the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. It's not the current one. It's the first one that we did public outreach on. That's, that's what we took, that mapping. So you can see there's urban reserve all the way, the hashed area over that southwest area to the Boone County line. And then the Champlin property um, was given the urban growth designation. Because it had this, um, it had a a future land use designation under the urban reserve, which I will talk about somewhere later on too. As well as Meadow Glen for that reason. Um, so the board requested that all of the urban reserve be removed. And that the urban growth area be removed from the Champlin property. That was in December. Um, the city agreed to remove the urban reserve from the southwest area. That was otherwise mapped as ag farm service. There was unintentionally, um, it was unintentionally left on Meadow Glen. But because now the southwest area has been removed from the urban reserve. It's not possible to involuntarily annex Meadow Glen. There's not enough acres of annexable land left. Um. So I think if we choose to move forward and finalize a plan, you know, I flagged this issue for Ames back in January and they understand that it was unintentional. Um, and that's something we could change because it really doesn't matter at this point. And I think, you know, symbolically, if we wanna remove that and we wanna move forward and finalize the plan, we could, we could flag that in our letter to them. Um.
To remove the urban reserve.
Yeah.
From.
Yes, and we can articulate and their staff understands this, that having it there versus not having it there at this point. With the rest of the urban reserve moved off, removed off the area has no actual bearing on how things will work. Does that make sense?
So it would not be annexed, what you're saying is Meadow Glen would not, does that include Champlin Farms as well?
So we're gonna get into Champlin. It wouldn't. But yes, so Meadow Glen, because of this, you know. Basically, the mapping of the area and the staff's report to city council didn't quite match up with the motion. Um, Meadow Glen is currently mapped as urban reserve still, even though we asked for it to be removed. They just didn't take action. And while it's mapped urban reserve currently, because they did take action to remove the rest of the urban reserve over that area. It it just can't be annexed. There's not enough land to take them in involuntarily, but we can certainly remove it still too, because again.
I think we should request the change just because I think people will feel more.
Oh, I agree. I think it's a good.
Having to rely on.
Yes, that logic. Yes, I think even though logically that works, I I agree, we could remove it. Yeah.
Well, and I think too, if we add it to start, you know, look at it later down the road, we'd be seeing.
Yeah, sure.
Clearly.
What happened. Yeah. And again, I just, I flagged it. I I don't, Ames staff hadn't realized it. It was just unintentional.
And just for clarity, involuntary annexation cannot happen.
Right.
But volun, someone could.
Well, so here's the other point, flip side of this. If it has urban reserve on it, someone could voluntarily request to be annexed. If we request that be removed, then Ames can't accept that application.
Okay, well, there's our answer, I think.
So. Yeah. So we can request that. I don't think it's a big deal. I I, their staff understands it was a mistake and we're all on the same page. Um. But that brings us to the Champlin property, which you can still see as blue urban growth in in their latest offer to you all. Um. So again, here's some of the benefits of what you've gotten just broken down. Um, Ames agreed to remove the urban reserve overlay from approximately thirteen hundred acres in the southwest. Um, which means they cannot accept an application for annexation during the life of the plan in that area. Um. And then with Meadow Glen, again, we can request it to be changed, but but feasibly, rationally. It can also no longer be annexed as a non-consenting or involuntarily. So let's dig into this Champlin um, farms issue. And I I don't know if there's folks on the the Zoom. I know I recognize everybody here, but if there's folks on the Zoom that are just joining us. Um, because I know there was a petition that went around about Whirly Creek. This is the time to listen to where we're at with this issue. Um, I really appreciate the engagement and everyone raising these concerns. Um, but I also realize there's some confusion on on what Ames's policies are for development. And again, I'm not trying to advocate here. I just wanna, I went through their code. I really dug in and asked some questions and I wanna share that information here.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, so the Champlin property is approximately a hundred and thirty-seven acres. Um, so it's pretty large, but there is a significant amount of environmentally sensitive area mapped on it too, which is where these concerns are coming from. What would happen to that area if it developed? Um. Again, the urban growth designation just means that if the property owner were interested in annexing and developing, they could make that request. With this plan, we're not forcing anyone to annex. Um, we're not forcing anyone to sell their land. So it's just if they would like to, they have that option. And and why they've been given that option and why Ames didn't budge on changing the designation. Is because there's infrastructure there. There's city sewer and water. And so it represents. An efficient area Ames could grow in without any further investments by the city. Take that how you will. That's just where, that's what their letter outlined. That's what council's discussion included. Um. So again, you twice asked for this designation to be removed because of concerns. Um, and and Ames has declined both times because of this infrastructure issue. Um, so here is a map of the infrastructure on the property. Um, the sewer is stubbed in green and there is water along Dartmoor Road. And you can see the tree area. Um, so Whirly Creek is on the northern portion of the property. If you see in the northwest corner, that that waterway. So Whirly Creek is on the northern portion of the property. If you see in the northwest corner, that, that waterway. And then there's another tributary to the south and the, the whole Champlin site is, is highlighted in yellow. And while we're talking about this site mainly, I, I think there are a couple other properties north of it that are still mapped as urban growth as well. That is, you know, I can't provide Ames's logic on that. They didn't discuss it. If I had to take a guess, it'd be because they're, they're.
Don't guess.
Okay.
Yeah, don't guess.
They're adjacent, but.
Yeah. We don't need to try and.
Yeah.
Their reasons.
I don't know. But again, with that designation, they're not, they could ask to be annexed. If Champlin went in, they might be annexed, but they're not gonna be developed. That, that still has to be voluntary. A property owner has to want to sell and redevelop their property. No one's gonna force that. Um, so I just wanted to talk about this infrastructure issue and how it fits into the, the larger scheme of things with Ames's comprehensive plan. So there's these other blue areas too that are also urban growth, right? Besides Champlin. Ames, this is, this slide is from their 2040 Plan. I took the language out of there. Ames is focusing on growing in areas in all directions that they consider contiguous greenfield development. So that's probably ag land like the Champlin property that's existing adjacent to city limits or very near to. They're specifically focusing on areas that can be served by existing infrastructure at a low cost extension. And then there's also areas within the urban service area and within these areas that, that need some investments. So for instance, southeast by the airport. There's an item on their city council agenda tonight to run water down sixty-nine. So they're making those investments in these areas that need infrastructure, but keeping the option open to annex the others. And I think that's where they're coming from. And it is a change in course from their previous policies to kind of pay for these infrastructure extensions into these areas. Okay, so now let's go back to Champlin. So there is a two thousand five sewer study that I know has caused some concern. I get it. With the board's request and, and successful request to remove the, the urban reserve area over the southwest all the way to the, the Boone County line, that sewer study was about extending the existing trunk sewer further west. And yes, it did discuss as an option running it with Whirly Creek. There were other options as well. But we're not talking about that extension with, with the Champlin Farms property. There's sewer stub to the property. And so when it develops, we're not, we're not doing a larger extension west. It would just be extended on site. And usually that's run under roads where the roads would be. So that they can, you know, access it and maintain it in the future. Does that make sense? So the sewer study, yes, I get that there's concern over it. But I think with the board's successful negotiation to get the urban reserve removed off to the county line, it's not really representative of what's gonna happen in the area any longer. And on the Champlin Farms property, you know, it's stubbed to the site, so it just needs to be extended within that site.
So with the, with the area to the west being removed, sewer just will not be extended out.
I don't know why Ames would do that because they can't annex there.
Right.
Yeah. So I think we've addressed that issue somewhat. The other issue is if development were to occur on the site, and again voluntarily, because the property owner was interested, what would be the impact on the vegetation? You know, what would be the impact on the creek's stability? So again, and I know I've said this before, but I've, I've got some slides that I hopefully will make it clearer. When, when a rezoning is proposed in Ames and, and, and they would have an inventory done of the natural areas on the site. And they'd use outlots or easements to preserve these areas and, and including the floodplain, which there is some floodplain along Whirly Creek. They also have stormwater management requirements that basically require runoff from the site has to be improved to the point at which the property is basically has a runoff rates equivalent to a prairie. Like Meadow. Yeah.
Rapped you really quickly. What we're talking about right now would be if they were annexed in.
Yes, 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 if they were annexed in.
Okay. Okay.
And I think the big point that I want to make here is I know there's a real concern about how the stormwater would be handled in the creek. I, I, I understand that there's a thought that the creek might be straightened or somehow paved. And Ames's code specifically does not allow that.
I'm gonna, I, I understand, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I, I also know that if you drive down Duff and you look at Iowa Creek.
Yeah.
I don't see how that actually.
With the flood mitigation project?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, the flood mitigation project isn't, you know, the typical residential development. So I get, yeah.
Right. But, but my point being, even though in this moment in time, maybe this is what the rules say. I think the fear and the concern is.
I recognize that.
Later, it doesn't really, there.
Yeah.
Doesn't really matter.
I, I recognize that. I just wanted to make sure we all knew what the rule was.
Right, right. I, I appreciate that.
And so with an example of this in a residential development, not necessarily the Duff area like you pointed out. This is scenic valley. So this is Iowa Creek. The blue is the floodplain. This is two thousand eight on the left-hand side. And now twenty twenty-one. So the way the lots were laid out in this subdivision, there is some treat area on the lots. But there's an easement over it. I pulled the plating documents to protect those trees. So you can see how the, yes, the houses are close, but a lot of the trees are still there. So just, and then if you could go to the next slide. This is another one that we actually had to work with them on recently because they need to extend sewer to it and it was through land in the county. So this is North Sunset Ridge. Again, there's some floodplain and some trees. And that was designed around, you can see the blue area, the green areas that were, are maintained as open space. But I, I do understand the concerns, absolutely. And I will just note in working with Ames, one thing that we did require, because the sewer was coming through the county, is that it be directionally drilled, so the maximum amount of trees could be maintained. So I think there's also a lot of concerns about rural character here. And, and if it were to develop, you know, what would that look like for the area? And so I just pulled some of the policies from the twenty forty Plan on that residential neighborhood three designation that it is shown as on the map. And it basically on this slide, it just says that, that, that's kind of like a typical rural sub, not rural, typical subdivision configuration. So it's one of the lower density. And I know when I say low density, it's, it's, it's high density for the county, but it'd be low density for Ames. Are there questions on that? Or do you want to go to one eightieth and one ninetieth?
I think, I think we can.
Okay, great.
Forward and circle back.
Okay, so. Between one eightieth and one ninetieth, the board requested a buffer, essentially an agricultural buffer, we'll call it. And this was, you know, to protect the agricultural land in that area. You know, there's some high value agricultural land, but also Gilbert is concerned about maintaining the separation between their communities. So on the left-hand side, you see Ames' Plan twenty forty map with the urban reserve all the way up to one hundred and eightieth street. That is the northern limit where you don't see the hash mark. And then we just took that with the draft plan that we put out for public outreach and used the same mapping. So that's not where we're at though. You all requested for that full area to be removed. And so Ames agreed to create a quarter mile buffer on the south side of one eightieth, as well as remove the urban reserve west of the railroad tracks in that area. So what that means is there's, is now an area that won't be annexed within, between that corridor, between one eightieth and one ninetieth, as well as, you know, a buffer for the life of the plan. And this slide basically just says what I said. Again, you know, if we choose to move forward without the plan, they'll, they'll continue to follow their twenty forty Plan for the area, which would allow annexation. So just the remaining area, again, could be annexed. That's still urban reserve. Ames did agree to a policy that, you know, there's concurrence with infrastructure required when they're annexing urban reserve. That's something. I know it's not what you guys want, but just wanted to bring it up. And then I, this is where I wanted to bring up Gilbert's letter. So when I wrote the staff report, I attended their, their city council meeting when they reviewed Ames's changes and I just hadn't received their official letter yet. So we did get that yesterday evening. I did provide you with a copy, but they're re-requesting that full buffer. Is how I would sum it up. Between one eightieth and one ninetieth, they want the full area, no urban reserve, just ag farm service. I did just want to touch on the urban reserve as well, because that was the third request that the board made in its December letter to overall, let's reduce the urban reserve. So I know we've gotten, you know, thirteen hundred acres southwest of town, you know, they've made the urban reserve half of what it was before, between one eightieth and one ninetieth. So there was some movement. But I know there's still some remaining. So what, you know, what possible benefits could we get from the urban reserve? I guess that is, is a shift from the previous fringe plan where we were allowing these transitional developments in these areas that might eventually come into the city. And what we were seeing was, you know, then Ames is developing these growth areas and then the county's allowing development of these other transitional areas. And so there could be some accelerated loss of farmland and natural resources if we were doing that, instead of just allowing basically Ames to develop those areas as it got to it with infrastructure. So that's what I came up with in terms of, you know, what might be the county's interest. I know there's concern about annexation. I'm not trying to downplay that. Just trying to provide a pro and a con. So this is the conclusion. Again, you could accept Ames's changes and direct staff to finalize the plan. You're not voting on a final plan today. There would be public hearings. Ames will go first in those public hearings, which is great so that they can hear all the concerns that you've heard. The plan, if finalized as proposed today by Ames, would have those limitations on conditional uses and allow annexation of the Champlin property and still have urban reserve. Not as much, but still have some between one eightieth and one ninetieth. If we don't accept to finalize the plan, you know, they're just gonna follow their twenty forty Plan policies, which would allow annexation. I think that's our main issue here of those areas that you've now got limitations on. They would also have review authority over all the divisions within two miles. And we wouldn't have agreed upon policies for citing rural residential development. So again, I know it's not everything you asked for, but this is where we're at.
Can I ask one question about the, when you said Ames has accepted, would accept our mapping of environmentally sensitive areas, what protections does that, I mean, what does that mean? They're just saying, yep, the map can be green there.
Yeah, they're recognizing it. And then I think what we worked out as a policy is when an annexation was proposed, we would send them information. If we have an inventory on that area, we'll send that. And if conservation has management recommendations, we would send those as well, or buffer suggestions, we'd send those.
Okay, and then what happens?
And then their standards would apply where they could inventory the areas and their buffer sizes would apply too. So for streams, they require a buffer of fifty to a hundred feet, but that would be, you know, on them to apply.
Do you know if the, if Ames will be discussing the Gilbert's letter? I know you just received that.
So I'm not sure. I, I think Ames's process is that there's, there's communications to council that get distributed at their council meetings. So it, they probably won't be on tonight's agenda, given that we just received it yesterday. So in two weeks, it'll probably be a communication to council and they can choose to take further action on it or not. If they chose to take further action, be a memo from their staff on the request and any changes they could make.
When will Ames have its public hearing?
If we choose to finalize the plan, we'd first need to get that final document made and a twenty eighty agreement. And then schedule that public hearing. So I don't have a date, could be April, could be May.
Okay, and I'm a little confused then.
Okay.
I thought that we were talking about the city of Ames having its public hearing and hearing from all these people before we finalize.
Right. So.
Finalizing today.
We're not finalizing today.
Okay, that's what, but if we're not finalizing today, how soon can Ames, has Ames agreed to have a public hearing?
So we.
And on what would it be?
Yeah, so we would, if you give me direction to finalize today, what you would be saying is, okay, we understand, we didn't get everything we asked for, but we're moving forward with the changes that Ames has proposed based on our requests. And I would come up with a plan, a new mapping and a twenty eighty agreement. And then once that was all done, Ames would schedule its public hearing to take action to approve that or deny or change that. And then we would go after that to take final action to approve or deny or change.
That would be on us to develop the twenty eight E in that final.
I'd work with Ames staff, but I've been taking the lead on this, so I don't think that would change. But if you want that to change, we could request that too. Okay. I, I think it's a.
I think where we're getting confused is that while we're saying we're not finalizing it, when you're explaining the process, you're saying if you give us, give me directions to finalize. But I think we're using finalize.
Here's my concern.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
We have heard how many times from these same people. And what we hear from them is they are upset with what Ames wants to do. Ames needs to hear from them before we finalize the plan. That's my bottom line.
Okay. That's what, you'd give me direction to make amendments. Based on what's been presented to you today. And then we do public hearings and they'd go first.
Yeah, I think, I think that, that will, I think, I like that.
Okay.
Say that again.
What you're doing today is giving me direction to make the amendments to the plan that Ames has agreed to and bring that document and the new mapping forward where they have a public hearing to take action to approve it.
But that sounds like we're agreeing to what Ames has said.
Well, I think, I, hold on. I think, I think what she's saying is we'll give her direction for any changes we want made today. Or accepting it as is, or saying we accept all but X. Go back, work on the finalized proposal. And then Ames will have you, and, and telling you to work with Ames staff to get it finalized, get the twenty eight E done, and then the first place, the final proposed draft will be heard and have a public hearing is Ames. And then Ames will have to say yes or no, instead of Ames saying, well, we hear what you say here, here and here, but we say no and our, our, what we say is final. I think that's what.
Yes.
What we're looking at.
And.
So it sounds to me almost like we wanna, we'd be voting on change, or we'd say, yeah, we'd like what they have or whatever changes. It's almost, to me, it sounds like we're giving you direction.
what they have or whatever changes. It's almost to me, sounds like we're giving you direction to say, this is where we're at. Kind of still within that negotiation. And then for them to finalize whatever and send a proposal so that, that's what it kind of sounds to me versus you coming up with all the mapping and everything else. If I'm hearing correctly, what we're wanting is us to give you some direction. Sounds almost like, okay, we either like this or we don't, or we still have concerns about this particular area. Ames, it's in your ballpark to hear these people first before anything final comes out.
That's exactly.
Because Linda, you're right, we're, we're hearing from everybody.
Yeah, and, and you can say the same things to us that you've said to us how many times. We're not Ames.
Right.
We don't have the influence with Ames to say, no, we do, we're negotiating, but we can't. They need to hear from you. We've heard from you several times. We appreciate it, but we need you, you're talking to us isn't going to help that. I think we need to get it so you can talk to Ames. That's what I'm after.
Right.
So how do we go about that? Do we go through appendix A and say, where are we on all these points? Is, is appendix A all conclusive? I mean,
Appendix A is all of the changes you've requested.
Okay.
And I have highlighted or bolded where we're at. So we agree on most of them. The issues we're not in agreement on are the Champlin Farms property and the area between one eightieth and one ninetieth. So if you want me to make all of those changes in appendix A and also produce a plan with, you know, some limitations of no urban reserve in the southwest and, you know, the limited, not full area that Ames has suggested. That's what you'd be telling me to do today. Does that make sense? And then we'd do, then they'd do a public hearing and then we'd do a public hearing. If you're requesting a public hearing before I do any work, that's different.
That's, I don't, that's not what we're talking about.
Okay, just checking.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I, my, my thing was, was I didn't want you to do the whole thing. And trying to figure out the opportunity for folks to get in front of Ames.
Okay, that does sound like what you're saying, though, that you, there would be a public hearing before I made any of these changes.
So we haven't talked about the changes yet.
Right.
So.
Yeah. Um, so the changes you agreed to in December, except for the Champlin issue and the one eightieth, one ninetieth. So that's what you're saying we need to talk through. Mm hmm. No?
No, we don't need to talk through anything we agreed to.
Right. I'm just want to make sure that you just want to talk through these remaining issues.
Right.
Okay, great.
Right.
Great.
Right.
So if we went through appendix A, it'd be basically going through things we'd agreed to.
No.
Besides Champlin and, and one eightieth, one ninetieth.
Should we, would it be helpful if we moved to hearing public comment and then, or would you rather?
I'll just say one more thing.
Sure.
I, you know, this is a lot of time. And so if you don't think you can agree to a plan that shows Champlin as urban growth, for instance, you probably don't want to, you know, have me do a lot of work on that. Because I, I think Ames did make it seem like this was a final offer. So if we're
Yeah, I, I, I hear, I just, I hear what you're saying. I don't think any of us want you spending a whole lot of time on something that ultimately we, we know is not going to come to fruition.
Right.
Yes, yes.
Just, um, yeah.
I think um, you know, I think if we have an additional request or recommendation or change that needs to be made, um, that's not going to that's not going to result in you going back and doing a lot of work and then surprise Ames, here's the, here's our proposal, here are all these changes. Um,
Okay.
If there's, if there, if there is an additional change that we decide we want to make, then can we send a memo to Ames and just say?
I just didn't, there's no third option because I, I just don't know at this point what.
Right.
So yeah, we can totally do that.
Right, right. Because I, I think, I think we all recognize the benefits of, of landing in a place where we have a, a plan in place. Um, but I, I also know that we still have some pain points.
Mm hmm.
Um, and while Ames might say this is our final offer, um, okay, here's our, here's one more thing we'd like.
Okay.
You know, I, I think.
Yeah. Okay.
I, if that's where, if that's
No, I think we're on the same page there. I just want
Yeah, no, I understand. You need clarity and sometimes that, that's hard to get. Um, especially when we've got a lot of conversations moving. Um, are you ready for
I'm fine if you want to.
Public comment?
For comments.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so, um, I'll just ask that anyone who's going to make public comment, uh, if you could uh, move to the podium to make that comment. I believe the microphone should be on. Um, and we will, I'm, um, I am going to ask you to limit your comments to two minutes. Um, we've got a we've got a lot of folks here that want to talk and, and we have heard a lot from folks. Uh, so, and actually, we're gonna, um, the first, the first one that I have here is, um, Liesel.
Did you fill out a blue slip?
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
Liesel. Okay, well, we'll, we'll just, we'll just go in order. At least all Danielson.
Hi, Liesel Danielson, two nine eight one, South Dakota Avenue.
No.
Sorry. First of all, I do want to say I've been to all three city council meetings and we only were, only were allowed to speak at one of them. So they didn't really care what we had to say. So please make note of that. Um, I would just say, back in two thousand fifteen, I saw, I watched on a Zoom or live or whatever, Ames council meeting. And I saw Christine stand up and speak. And I didn't know her. And she spoke with such passion about a place that I love so much. I couldn't believe there was someone downstream that loved it as much as I did and wanted to protect it as much as I did. So I realized we're out of it. But she's not, so I'm going to stand here with her today and I'm going to stand up for that land. I'm going to stand up for the animals and the trees. And I, I read fifteen acres in the staff report. I just went around with with the measuring tool on Beacon, just around that tributary. If you go around the tree line, the tool tells you the number of acres, that's twenty eight acres right there. I mean, it's rough, it's a little lines, but that's twenty eight acres and that's right where the sewer is stubbed right now. How are they going to get south of that tributary if they don't go right through it? So we're standing here, I'm standing here, I'm standing with Christine. And I'm asking you to stay strong with us and protect this land. Thanks.
Thanks, Liesel.
Next, we have Sonia Sundberg.
I apologize for trying to jump ahead.
No, no worries.
Realize you're calling. Um, yes, I, I appreciate Amelia passing out the letter. I know that we got it late from Mayor Pop, um, yesterday and I forwarded it to the chair and to Amelia. Um, thinking that it would get passed on. I didn't, didn't want to break any open meeting laws.
No, that, that was my error. I didn't, that was my error.
Okay, so I'm Sonia Sundberg. I am the city clerk in Gilbert. And, um, you've gotten this letter from Mayor Pop. And in it, he references this last um, map that was kind of a combination of what Gilbert and the Board of Supervisors had requested, the twelve, thirteen, twenty-two map. So one of the things that came up, um, during the council meeting, our February council meeting, um, was in response to Ames. And we realized that they did make a slight concession in giving us the quarter mile buffer. While we appreciate that because it does allow us that buffer to continue to apply for grants, um, which if we had, um, city limits right up against each other, a lot of those opportunities would go away. Ames has access to a lot of federal grants because of their size. We don't. So we need every bit of help we can get for those kind of grant opportunities. So we see that they made that concession to give us that separation. There's also the concession for the portion west of the railroad tracks. Um, and we acknowledge that too, that they give that concession as well. One of the concerns that came up in the council meeting was the Ada Hayden watershed protection area. And that falls, a good portion of that falls between one eightieth and one ninetieth. The concern that came up, um, from a couple of council members during our meeting is why continue growth in that watershed area? Um, while the one eightieth or that one quarter mile south of one eightieth would continue to be agricultural and farm services, there's a, that's a portion of that area, but there's still three quarters of a mile of that Ada Hayden area that's still in the urban overlay. Um, so at the very minimum, I mean, at if we're going for the big dreams, we still want one eightieth and one ninetieth to stay ag and farm services area. Absolutely. We like that designation between the big city and the small city. We, you know, we like that little bit of a bedroom community feel. But it did get brought up during the council meeting that if we could carve that Ada Hayden watershed protection area between one eightieth and one ninetieth continue to be ag and farm service, including that quarter mile that Ames conceded or conceded to. Um, I think that would make much progress in in relations between the city and, and Ames. And it's not everything, obviously, but, um, there is concern that if this is an area that we're, we're worried about for environmental and water protection, which is what they've stated as part of Ada Hayden potentially being a water source, it seems to make sense that we would prohibit growth in that watershed area. Mayor Pop also did refer to some other things in his letter about the fire district. Um, Gilbert Franklin Fire District is, you know, less than a mile away from this one eightieth and one ninetieth. Their response times much quicker. Um, they're easier to serve that area. And then he also commented on, um, some traffic intersections. So just, I know you may not have gotten time to review it, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
We appreciate you taking time to come and go through that with us too. Um, next, we will move to Robert Brandt. And I, I realized that last one was a little bit more than two minutes, but I wanted to
For the sake of time, I would like to yield my two minutes, uh, for my wife's prepared, our prepared statement.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's Rosie?
Rosie.
Rosie Brandt.
Rosie Brandt, sixty-three, fourteen, five hundred and tenth Avenue Ames. And hearing the discussion so far, I think this isn't going to be anything new to the board. So thank you for letting me vent. Story County Planning and Development sent a memo to the Board of Supervisors a few days ago, summarizing the actions that have occurred in the renewal process of the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. The memo was included on the agenda for this meeting and I read it with interest. Though the final decision is up to the board, it seems Planning and Development believe the board should approve the plan in its most recent form. Because if they don't, Ames will dissolve the twenty-eight agreement with Story County and we will lose benefits of the fringe plan. They're probably right, but for the sacred principle, I have to ask. If Story County residents living outside of Ames don't speak up now, allowing Ames to continue to have its way with county, with Story County's unincorporated land, when will they stop? Ames is part of Story County and Story County has committed to its C to C plan and its housing plan, both of which clearly state Story County's intentions to keep the characteristic look and use of its land established in its rich agricultural history. I've heard our supervisors wishes to stand by those intentions and I appreciate it. Thank you. Why does Ames have an overwhelming urge to grow over Story County's quality farm ground? Have they used every qualifying inch of space within their boundaries for infill and renewal? How does the urban sprawl that Ames wants to create fit with their lengthy and I'm told quite expensive environmental plan? Ames City Council stated in a January tenth, January tenth, twenty twenty-three letter, they will not entertain any other changes to the pro, proposed urban fringe plan. How should Story County and Gilbert respond to that statement? Isn't this plan meant to be a cooperative one between Story County, Gilbert and Ames? I read that Gilbert still has a recommendation at this time for a change of the plan. Will it be, will it be considered? Why does Ames have such singular power? It's kind of a rhetorical question. I think we probably all know why. Ames states that for the renewal of the current fringe plan, the changes they proposed were taken from their already approved twenty forty city plan. By the way, I wonder how many Story County residents living outside the boundaries of Ames added their input when the city was forming its twenty forty city plan. I didn't think I could as a non-resident. Had I known Story County land was being included in their city plan, I would have spoken up. In development of that city plan, Ames proposed growth areas in the fringe area of unincorporated Story County that would accommodate fifteen thousand people. That added population on, on the north side of Ames will greatly affect the Gilbert School District, both in numbers of students and in facilities. I'm concerned. Though growth and change can be good, how will the climate of our school, which is prized and sought after by parents for their children, change? How will our property taxes change? Ames states they referred to their city plan when making recommendations for the renewal of the fringe plan. And they use that already approved twenty forty city plan as a reason to reject some of Story County and Gilbert's recommendations for an updated fringe plan. From reading Ames City Council meeting minutes, it seems to me the council regularly makes changes to past plans, zoning and et cetera, when it suits their needs. Couldn't they do the same with the twenty forty plan as they tried to cooperate with the needs of Gilbert and Story County? When I attended the first conversations about an Ames Urban Fringe Plan back in nineteen ninety-seven, we were told the fringe was meant to be a two mile buffer around Ames where development would not be allowed. Since then, the fringe plan has become an area for continued growth by Ames in all directions. With this latest attempt by them to nearly double the amount of land they control, I feel Ames has gotten out of control. I hope they can be stopped. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kim Christiansen.
You knew you'd have to hear from me before the, the, um, I've got a few points. Um, partly of what Amelia's gone through. Um, the one, the first thing is she talks about that the, um, Ag and Farm Service was expanded by thirteen hundred acres. More than half of that is Iowa State land, I believe. So it's kind of an illusion, you know, of smoke and mirrors of how much Ames really gave up and how much they didn't give up. The, uh, uh, she says that she's not an advocate for Ames. Every po, every time there's been a, a, a response from Ames or Ames wants something done, Amelia has never said anything.
I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you. I, I do not want this to be a personal
I agree.
attack. Thank you.
Can I finish my other points?
Please do.
I'll stay very, I'll be very careful. The, one thing about Ames and communication, the, we have been involved with the 2040 plan from its very beginning. In fact, before that time, I even spoke at the, or at the Board of Supervisors here about having this buffer between the 30 acres or the Highway 30 and Iowa State land. So we've been involved with that for a long time. Kelly said, as it was cut, the 2040 plan was being developed, some things we got taken care of, we got out of the plan and other things we, we didn't do quite as well with. He said, you need to talk to your supervisors. You need to go because that is your representation, not the city of Ames. And the last four times that I've been at the city council, when the fringe plan was on the docket, I was not allowed to speak. No public input. Okay, so as far as us having a chance getting back into the city, that's going to be minimal. I think it's important that you have some kind of a direction, a strong direction, telling them exactly where you're headed in that regard. The concept of being final, the, there was nothing in the vote from the city council, and I was at that meeting where they, this proposal that resulted in this letter that says anything about this being a final letter, this final proposal, I mean, that wasn't voted on. I mean, it wasn't part of the, what they agreed to. However, the staff from that, Duke does come back and they say that the proposal as a final attempt. Well, I don't know what the final attempt means. I think the word final is not final. I just want to make that point, and I don't, I believe Ames does not think it's final.
Thank you. You're, you're at time.
That's it, huh?
Thank you.
Okay.
Next, we have Brad Perkins.
Brad Perkins, 5500 240th Street, Ames. The situation feels vaguely familiar. After an exhaustive amount of discussions, meetings, hearings, input, I really think that the Board of Supervisors here put together a really good compromise. And we know it's a compromise because not everybody gets what they want. But maybe they think they can live with it. And I think that was a good plan. And I think what you sent Ames reflects a compromise. I find it a little disheartening to hear words like, well, that's it. You take our last offer or nothing. I, I, I think if there's any board, any government entity that has truly listened and taken that input to heart, it's this board, and it's been reflected in what you've sent to the city of Ames. And if this is truly where we're at, if you take the city of Ames statement that this is it, no more negotiation, well, then maybe it's okay just to say we're done. It's going to be okay if the Board of Supervisors decides, maybe we don't need an agreement. Maybe we'll learn to live with one, or maybe, just maybe, in the future sometime, the city of Ames will come back and they'll say, gosh, maybe we should listen, truly listen. Listen to the people that are outside of the city whose property they are affecting every time they have a fringe plan. That's what this board has done. It's what I wish city of Ames would do. I have no confidence that they would or ever have listened to any of us with our concerns. So I would encourage you to stand fast. I would encourage you to keep putting what you feel is the best compromise in place. And if they just get to the point where it's our way or no way, then maybe it's time to let them go. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brad. Next, we have Phil Iseverly. Did I get it right this time? Awesome.
Phil Iseverly, 3108 South Dakota Avenue. I just, a couple of points in, that were made during the presentation that, and I'm wondering if at all I could get a slide up there that shows the chaplain property and where the sewer line comes to the, the border of the property.
We, we, we have, we have it here.
Oh, okay. Well, anyway, this summer sometime, we had a tour out in that area. And if you recall, when we went over the creek from State Street, or Straight Avenue onto Dartmoor, we pointed out the fact that when they put that stub in, they took out, they took a swath 100 foot wide. And they took all the trees out and they just, and they put their manholes and so forth. In the presentation, it was stated that the sewer line would go through up on the road. No, it won't. It'll go right through where it stubs to the, to the property line, right through the trees. And they'll take 100 feet, 50 foot either side. It's just standard. They have to do that. And because I was very active in the original sewer thing for Whirly Creek back in 2004 and 2005, the mindset, or not the mindset, but the engineering says, follow the fall of the creek for flow, and that's what they'll do. So anyway, I want you to keep that in mind. I also find it, the, the board was very strong, and so was the commission, Planning and Zoning Commission for the county in keeping agricultural ground the way it is. Well, this 180 to 190, that's gonna just take it all. And why does the city still want 14,000, 15,000 acres when in the past 20 years or whatever it was, as was stated in another meeting, they only had, you know, they only took 4,000 acres. Why in the world do they need to take all that and hold it? As Brad said, yes, you guys need to, I request that you guys hold fast, submit to what you, what you already have, and if the city doesn't accept it, so be it. Same thing for Gilbert. If they don't accept it, so be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Todd Burns, Bert, Burdum?
Bertram.
Bertram, sorry. I was trying to stick an S in there, and I knew there wasn't one.
So I'm, I'm from 3701 Onion Creek Lane, which is west side of Ames, northwest corner. But the point that I'd like to speak to is actually on the east side of Ames, I'm also on the board of the Isaac Walton League.
Can you talk?
Having a hard time hearing you.
I'm on the board of the Isaac Walton League on the east side of town, which is kind of into a peninsula into the city limits, so to speak. We're neighbors of a new development that Ames is really on board with on Dayton Avenue. And what I would say to you all, including the board, is that you really have to hold the city to their policies, including how much ground gets disturbed. We've got involved with the city and their engineering department and what the developer was going to do based on city policies in that Dayton project basically would have eliminated water flow into our pond that we have on our property. Now, they were going by policies that have been set that they can't allow runoff off of their property. Well, there's gonna be a lot of pavement and a lot of buildings, and so that runoff would have increased. However, based on those policies, we wouldn't have gotten any flow into our pond at all. So we worked with them. We held them to their policies in regards to not changing that flow. Now, they're just getting around to starting on that, so we have to stay vigilant and that we get what we requested that they said that they would do. But it does work if you stay diligent, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Christine Hausner.
Christine Hausner, 3505 245th Street. I had this whole speech planned out, but I'm switching gears now. If I can't have the map put up here, if you can look at the map and you see the tributary to the creek, Amelia's saying that they will not straighten the creek and have policies against straightening the creek to put a sewer in is false. I know that because I lived there. I know what it looked like before. I have asked you ladies if you'd like to go down there and look and see what it looked like and what they did to it. You are more than welcome to. I can do that for you. I have many neighbors that can attest to the mess they made, how many trees they put down, how they're having problems with creek bed erosion. They are going to straighten this creek, period. That's the only way you can do it. So you see that green thing where it's going like this and that there are tributaries there? They are going to straighten that. That's the only way they can do it, all the way up to the Munsons property. So I think that's like a, I don't know, half mile or something. If you watched my videos, I showed so what it was. So in 15 acres. She failed to mention that Kelly has said that the city's plan is to make Whirly Creek proper, the Soul Storm Sewer Drainage System for any development in Southwest Ames. He said that many years ago. So, I mean, it's reasonable to assume if you're changing the water quality and the habitat and the ecosystem and the stability of a creek, and it's going to affect the entire creek, all of properties downstream, that's far more than 15 acres. I told you that there's only 70 or 80 tillable acres on that property per the farmer. That's how much there is. If you look at the map, all that green stuff is literally almost half of the farm. I also confirmed that with one of the prime developers in this area. That's all there is. So unless the city's planning on going on floodplains and cliffs and, and building on top of the creek and tearing all the timber down, but that's what the city of Ames would probably do. And plus, our creeks are one of the top two most eroding and unstable creeks in this area, which will be made worse by urban development. I, she says in, in this, that this thing, this huge book is basically irrelevant. It's relevant because they did this study on the whole entire corridor. So basically, anything that happens in this area is not beneficial to the environment. So, so what? They're not putting the creek, the sewer expansion on the creek anymore? Well, they're just gonna hop the road and do it on the other side. So our protected wood ducks, they only go on one part of the creek. They don't go on the other. That's not the way that it works. So the only stuff that I feel is, is relevant is this stuff. Dr. Keith Somerville, he was one of the professors. He teaches at Drake. He was one of the professors involved with the study. He said he sent you a letter yesterday. And then, "Here 20 years since I worked a survey that corridor for animal biodiversity, I strongly suspect that little has changed from my core conclusion regarding the habitats within the site. The Whirly Creek area functions as a moderate to high-quality green belt. It provides habitat for diversity of animal species, some of which appear to be declining in abundance across the ranges. The habitat Whirly Creek provides does attract a large number of species that are regiably in decline," and he puts this in italics, "because areas like Whirly Creek are all too often considered expendable. There are ways to develop this land that respect the wildlife found here, something in the low density that preserve the better woodlands and allow for ecologically sensible setback from the creek itself." Sounds like more than 15 acres to me. It also sounds like a rule development which the city won't let us have. In regards to my petition, I mean, I, you tell us, what are we supposed to do? The city tells us to go to you guys because you're supposed to represent us. You tell us to go back to the city. I have been doing this for seven years. This 2015 thing that, that Lisa was talking about, I was pregnant with my son. He just turned seven. You know how much I've worked on this, how much I've worked my butt off for this. I have lost my soul over this. Do you think if I was able to convince the city because they were listening, I would have to be still doing this seven years later? They do not care. That's why we need you, because they're not listening to us. They have all the information that I've sent to you, the state archaeologist's letter, the letter from the Audubon Society, quotes from the professors. They never brought it up at any meeting. They don't care. That's why we need you to care. And Amelia says, oh, well, there's maybe a couple of properties that were.
Christine, Christine, I, I do not want this to be personal, so I'm gonna ask.
I'm just seeing what she said. She said there were a couple of properties that I was just going to clarify. There's four properties that are left in urban growth, and mine is one of them. I don't know how I am in urban growth. I cannot annex into the city. I'd have to take two properties in to do that. The utilities are a quarter of a mile away, and the nearest urban development is over a mile away. How am I in urban growth? So if you take the, take the environmental aspect out of it, it still doesn't make any sense. So this sewer, the city didn't pay for it. My neighbors had to put it in. They ruined the environment to do it. By all rights, it shouldn't even be there. And it's reasonable to assume that if this was brought up again, the city council would vote not to go with the sewer expansion because they did once before, based on all this stuff. So in regards to my petition, I'm, I'm finishing up. All comments were in favor of protecting this area. I couldn't obviously go through all the comments and everything. I don't have time. I just checked it. We're over 920 signatures. Notable signatures, three current Story County Conservation Board members and a former mayor, Dr. Brands, Dr. Peace, and Mayor Tedesco all signed it. Ed Fallon, a former state representative, signed it. Two more PhDs that were involved in the studies signed it. All members of our local chapter of the Audubon Society signed it. And I, I know that you're implementing new policies protecting natural areas and waterways, which I think is absolutely awesome. But how is this not a contradiction to everything you're trying to implement when we have all of these things that you're trying to protect, and now you're just gonna throw us to the wolves? How does that not contradict what you're trying to accomplish? I believe this time is the perfect time to negotiate. I don't believe that the city is going to let this plan that they've spent so much time and money on die just for our 70 acres. If you stand firm on taking us out, you're sending a clear message to the city that you do not feel that this area is conducive to urban development. If you leave us in, you're agreeing with them. I have no protection from the city, from the county right now in urban growth. Why would this plan benefit me? Why would leaving all four of our properties in the county benefit the county when you have expressed interest in protecting it originally and implementing new protections for the environment? My last paragraph. One day, years from now, you might find yourself in our area and decide to drive down our road and see that nothing has changed. And you'll say, I was a part of that. But the converse is also true. If you see 1,200 mobile homes or 400 houses five feet apart and half of our timber gone, the farmland gone, our ecosystem destroyed, you'll have to say, I was a part of that, too. If you leave us in, you are handing us over to the city of Ames on a silver platter and saying, here, do whatever the hell you want with them. And I promise you, that's exactly what they will do. This taking over a farmland and environment for a financial gain and urban sprawl has got to stop. We need you to be our voice because they are not listening to ours. Please don't give up on us yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I make one clarification? I think our concern with making sure that the city of Ames is hearing this is not us telling you to go talk to the city of Ames because they're gonna listen more than we're listening. It's because we want them to hear what we're hearing. And even if they have heard at a, at a public hearing, they will, they will take public comment. And we just want to make sure that that what we're hearing, they're hearing. And I, I appreciate the comment about what's happening out by Isaac Walton League. I know, you know, priorities get confused or get, everybody has their own priorities. They're not really confused. It's not the right word. But I don't think that anyone goes into public service with the intention to destroy or make our communities less than. And I think it's important that we remember that, that everyone is trying to make the best decisions for their community, whether we're talking about the community of Ames or whether we're talking about Story County. I think it's important that we continue to protect our natural resource areas. Our natural resource areas, and I think. We all have our part to play in making sure that if we land on an agreement that it it serves. Our community. But I I really. Want to. I really want to make sure that we're all remembering that we're all. Trying to do the right thing and trying to do the best job that we can and that that. We just remember the humanity that's involved. In in all this work.
That was very well said. Thank you. Thanks. I appreciate that. And agree totally. Um, may I say a couple of things? I didn't know if you were done or not.
I am done.
Okay. First of all, I'm going to apologize. I want to apologize to everybody who sent me an email in the last week or two that I did not reply to. I had some eye surgery. When you can't use your eyes for a week and a half, it's hard to reply to emails. See, and you're still catching up after that, okay? So I want to tell you that I think I read just about all the emails as. As much as I had time to get caught up with that and other things. Apologize, I did not acknowledge them. Okay? Um, I do want to say a couple of things, and and I have to say, this is a difficult issue. And land use is always a difficult issue. Because there are competing interests, and we fall on one side or another sometimes. What's what's our priority? But I do want to say one thing that I believe I understand about the urban fringe plan and the Iowa code and annexation. And one of these things is in the staff report. The adoption of the urban fringe plan does not automatically annex any land into the city. And there's an obverse to that as well. It's basically, nor does the absence of an urban fringe plan. Ensure that it will not happen. That we have to realize. Okay, annexation is in the code of Iowa. One thing we have been trying to do. In negotiating and negotiate is the key word here. We have been trying to negotiate some limitations on what. Ames would consider for annexation, and we've gotten some of that. Have we gotten everything that we wanted? No. But I will just say as one supervisor, I'm not done yet. I think there are a couple of things that we still need to, you know, we can still look at. And that we want Ames to maybe, maybe we'll go back. We're not, you know, maybe we'll say, you know, we want you to consider this a little bit. I personally do want the city council members, the mayor of Ames, to have the opportunity. To hear from you folks directly. And that's what I see it as. It's your opportunity, but it's also their opportunity, and I want them to have that before we finalize. Finalize our vote on this. So. Story County has led the process on this. Staff and elected officials have led the process. And as Supervisor Faisal said, we have, you know, we're operating in good, we're trying to operate in good faith. With our abilities, with our knowledge of this. And we've taken the brunt of the criticism that a lot of people have for the city of Ames, and that's okay. But there's, as we said, that we're negotiating. There's so much that we, only so much we can do. We have to decide at the end of this is the, you know, when we. Say negotiation seems to be done, is it worth the continuing of the plan? And we'll decide it then. But as I said, I want the city council of Ames and the mayor of Ames. And the staff to have the opportunity to hear from you folks directly. That's where I am today.
I'd like to make some comments too, but before I do, was there anyone online?
Thank you.
That wanted to make any public comment?
Was there anyone on Zoom who wanted to make public comment? Please raise your hand. I apologize.
Gotcha.
Good catch.
No, no, okay, no. I just want to make sure we were not forgetting.
Thank you.
Because they don't, they can't provide us the blue sheet.
Yeah.
Stuff. This has been a long process, and. I know all of us have either attended all the public meetings when this was first presented or as many as we could because. We all do have several other boards or commissions that. We serve on and just timing doesn't always allow us to be at every single one. But I think that's where it's upon us to bring it back to our colleagues and share what has happened. I know we have all met with a number of you. We've received numerous emails or the stack of cards. That have that have come into us, so certainly do not take. Any of the comments that have been presented lightly. I have read through every letter, printed off a number of them. I I know I haven't responded back to everyone yet, and some of it is just, you know, depends on the day that we have. If we're back to back meetings that day, you just don't have the time. There's just sometimes just not the time of the day. At nine o'clock at night for me to respond to an email might not be the most appropriate because I'm pretty exhausted and. Want to make sure that I'm giving it my full, my full attention on that. I think the one thing that I look at too. And I too want to make sure that, as Supervisor Merkin said, that Ames does hear what you're saying. I I get it. Even if they don't make the changes, they hear your impassioned. Plea and where you stand on those on 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 this as well. So that is, that is something that I would. Concur with. The one thing that does keep coming into my my mind though is. What if we don't have an urban fringe? And I know that some of you have said, that's fine. Let's let's just do away with it. My concern then is that if we don't, and I haven't made any final decisions on anything yet, but this is just my outside, open minded thinking. Is you lose all the negotiation and the protections we've put in place. And then Ames has more authority. And and I think that's what we're trying to limit is we're trying to do as much protection. As we can. Are we totally where everybody wants us to be yet? No, we're not. But we're certainly doing our best effort to try to get to that so that we can protect your lands. As much as as much as we can and protect the ecosystems and what's around and certainly understand. That Ames Ames is gonna grow. But how do we do that in a very conscious manner that we can? Have some authority or some say in that particular process?
So. A direction.
Yeah, direction and communication back to Ames. I need to pull something off the printer. I'll be right back.
Okay.
I think it's also important just to talk about the the fact that that this being Ames is last, we wanted to, we, this is it. This is the end. I think there are a lot of ways to interpret that this is our final. Version. You can interpret it as this is it. I'm not doing anything else. Or you can. Recognize that. They, they're just trying to get all of their things done too. And this is keeping them from moving forward with other plans that they're trying to finalize. So I think. Maybe, you know, is there some frustration there? Sure. But. Man.
There's a couple of things in Appendix A that I'm gonna ask staff about. Item eight. Confusion. It says if the board asks to finalize the plan, staff can work through this issue with the other cooperators. And I think you've got that someplace else. I'm just trying to look at the things that we don't need to be talking about right now. Simplifying the policy for reducing lot size for dwellings. What is the, just briefly, what's the? What's the issue here? With Ames's confusion on the request?
Oh, okay. You're right. Thanks. There are properties. In the fringe. That are twenty acres or ten acres, and they're buildable. Because they meet some exception to our thirty-five acre standard. And so when we wrote the policy that, you know, we can reduce lot sizes, carve off a farmstead, we wrote it with thirty-five acres in there. And so we needed to clarify that it applied to those other smaller parcels too. However, that wasn't really clear in the letter that we sent them, and they didn't act on it.
So you could, if we're sending a letter now, you could just do a little, you could clarify.
And I I don't think that's an issue.
Okay.
It just wasn't something that got acted on. I I think they'll probably be fine with it. They're fine with the thirty-five acre ones.
Okay. So then. That's so, that's so, that's so. Fourteen similarly.
Yeah. So the other part of that reduction in lot size policy is it applies to dwellings is how we've written it. So should that apply to? You know, we've got, for instance, a church that could be proposed. Should we allow? That lot size to be reduced or reconfigured to accommodate a smaller lot for a different type of use, a commercial use or a church? So just clarifying what kind of uses that policy applies to, and that was in the same issue area. Where this wasn't clear. I grouped it in with a giant paragraph, and I think they missed it.
Okay.
So.
So the the other, the two issues, looking in Appendix A. The two issues that. We've not reached agreement on. Are number two. Which is removing the urban reserve overlay. From Whirly Creek.
I think number two, where we're at with that is. Removing it fully is what you asked between one eightieth and not one ninetieth. That's the remaining issue there, and then correcting that. Error with the Meadow Glen mapping would fall under that too. Correcting that error with the Meadow Glen mapping would fall under that category too. So the remaining issues are figuring out what you want to do between Ames and Gilbert, really. And then the other one we don't have. Closure on is.
Six. Are correct?
Yes. The Champlin property.
I'll speak on the. The one eightieth to one ninetieth. I think a quarter mile is not much of a separation. And it's still a lot of prime ag land that is getting. Kind of. Eaten up by development. I also think the Ada Hayden watershed is more than just a water source, potential water source. It's some very. Very unique habitat that we have. And I'm part of Story County, and I. I feel like that Gilbert is totally. Appropriately asking for that mile separation. It's been that way for a long time. It's historical. I see. Other options that are open. To. Housing, and I would, I would like to not make a decision on that until. The city council and and Ames has looked at this issue again. And the same with the the issue regarding Whirly Creek. I would like to just kind of hold those in abeyance at this point.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite, what would you say with Whirl Creek, Whirly Creek, Whirl Creek?
I would like to hold both these in abeyance right now. I'm not saying yeah. Yes or no, but not make a decision now. I want the city council to hear from folks first on these two issues.
So the, so the direction to Amelia. Then are we asking her to draft the plan?
No.
It sounds like not.
Okay.
I'd be pretty uncomfortable if we didn't have resolution on those issues, and I was gonna.
Right, so the direction then would be. A memo to Ames?
Yes. Can I ask a clarifying question to you, Amelia? Because just what I've heard and. Just gotten a little confused in my brain this morning is the Champlin farm says the hundred and thirty-seven acres, but then I hear about the fifteen acres that.
Yeah, so there's. But there's fifty-one acres of environmentally. Sensitive area.
Fifty-one mapped as environmentally sensitive.
I transposed it, it appears in the staff memo and was not aware until public.
Okay.
Fifteen fifty-one.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay. That's okay.
Thanks for catching that, everyone. Actually, been in several memos. This is the first time I realized it.
So. Well, you've written hundreds of pages here, so I can see that happening. That is clarified.
So. So with fifty-one acres then identified as envi, just kind of walk me through that. Then there of, is that then not area that could be? Buildable or.
So my understanding is that there's flood plain. And so the flood, the main channel where the flood plain is, has to be put in an environmentally sensitive overlay. And then in addition, there's a buffer from the stream required in their code. Fifty to a hundred feet that, and then there'd be an inventory of treat areas that may result in additional outlots or easements being used to protect those.
Would it be possible for the city of Ames planners to map that? I think that'd make people feel going more comfortable.
The environmentally sensitive area?
Well, the, what their ordinances would do and say could be developed and couldn't.
Um, we could probably have them draw the buffer, but they'd need to do a site inventory. Is my understanding of how things work. So.
Marcus, did you?
Well, that buffer that Amelia is referring to is what we. Do when we do our subdivisions. When I bring a subdivision before you all and there's a stream or a creek or anything like that. It's just their existing buffer requirement is greater than what ours. Currently is until the update, but. Just to clarify that we're already, that's something that we're both doing and is not foreign to either entity.
What I have seen with other subdivisions in the city as well is requiring soil borings, so on areas where there might be steep slopes, making sure. They can support, you know, development. If they can't, stay in off them with an easement or an outlot.
So the, my other question is, and related to the. Other ordinance that you have out there right now, how does that impact? Like these fifty-one environmentally sensitive areas? If an urban fringe would go through or not. Would that have an impact?
So if if the area were annexed, our regulations wouldn't apply.
If it were annexed, but if it were not annexed.
If it were not annexed and proposed to be developed in the county, is what you're asking?
Well, so I'm just saying is is just hypothetical, if this passed through as as is, okay? How does that ordinance impact? This area, even though. This area, even though Ames has not annexed it yet. I keep hitting this and I get little black things that fly out, so excuse me.
Yes, so. The individual property owner would be limited to removing one acre of trees. Without replanting and then they could replant if they went over that. We'd have a buffer. I'm not sure what it would be. It might be a hundred, it might be seventy-five from the stream in terms of like new pole barns or houses. Um, and then if there are slopes over fifteen percent. We would also require some sort of testing or confirmation that they could be built on.
Okay.
But that's just individual, um. If, if they proposed a larger development with a lot of lots in, in the county. We require annexation first and so if they didn't want to annex, we'd need to go through a plan amendment process.
Okay.
And then if that was successfully amended, then in doing the site layout for the rural subdivision. Other requirements would apply, including mitigation of any trees taken out with one for one replanting.
Okay.
Um, all lots would need to stay off of slopes over twenty-five percent. Um, we'd need to make sure there weren't any, you know, forested wetlands along the creek that we need a buffer from.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So. The direction to Amelia would be to draft a memo. Informing the city of Ames. That we're not prepared to make decisions on the, the two issues that. That we already talked about. And then what?
Well, we're not, are we not prepared to make decisions or we're?
That's what I'm asking.
Are, are we still, are we saying we want you to reconsider that along with? Addressing, clarifying item eight, clarifying item fourteen. Uh, uh, Meadow Glen error. Is that what we're saying? I just want to make sure I'm clear.
We would like them to, to, um, hear from residents. And ask that, and after that reconsider.
The issue there is. In order to have the public hearing on the plan. We need a plan that we kind of are, are on the same page on.
Mm-hmm.
First.
We're on the same page on a lot of stuff. The, you know. We've seen so many documents. I just have to say I'm confused as to where we would be going with it. But is, is there a document that's nearly complete enough to have a plan on if we were just to say? Here are two or three iss- here are two issues that aren't decided yet.
Um.
I mean, some, not something that you have to create just out of the, you know, the atmosphere. You've got something already that's pretty close.
No.
No.
I've got Ames's draft that they sent you in November and I've got the appendix and I've got the maps that were in your memos. And that's where I'm at. I haven't started making changes to the actual document.
It's gonna be an easier way to do it than have staff go through a whole lot of work here. I'm, I'm kind of stymied.
Yeah, I, I mean, you can't force Ames to have a public hearing.
No.
That's.
We sure can't. But what we can do is we can say, well. Where we would like those last two items to land. Say that. And we could respond to Ames with. We recognize you've done a lot of conceding. However, these two issues are still very, very important to us and Ames can decide.
Well, what can you negotiate out of that? That what you're looking at? What else can we negotiate on that? Or are we saying, send a letter to Ames and saying, we want? A, B, C, and D. Do we want to still have one eightieth and one ninetieth? Whirl Creek in there plus addressing these couple errors or? I, I think that's what you're looking for is a little more clarity of what you want in a letter.
Yes.
So what, what does she? They came back with their proposal. She's, if I'm correcting you Amelia, right, you're wanting to know what proposal are we going back to them? Are we saying, yep, we'll take this and we'll start moving things or? Hey, we're drafting a letter.
Yeah.
We want to try one more negotiation and see where you'll land.
Yeah, and, and what that is. I don't know what it is.
Right.
Okay, and if we do that, we'll do the one more negotiation. And if it proves successful, then we have a plan. But if it doesn't, I would almost say, fine Ames, you draft the plan you want and you have a public hearing on it.
Okay. That's fine. Um. I really want to be involved in some way to make sure that everything gets changed.
To what we agreed upon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Concern, yeah, I, I get what you're saying. Yeah.
I just don't, I, I like that idea. Got a lot of stuff to do. Um, but I just want to. If at the end of the day, they've made all these changes, they have a public hearing and then they kick it back to us and there's things in there that, again. We would have wanted changed, we missed, I, I want to be, uh, involved.
I think our, I, I think we've got our two big kind of drop dead issues. Right? And then the, the fixes, those, the, the smaller fixes.
I have no problem with you looking at the plan that they put together to make sure that it's consistent with all the things that the supervisors. That they have agreed to with the supervisors to date. I have no problem with that.
Okay.
In fact, I would like you to.
That's fine, um. I was just really hoping that if we get to the finalization point. That we could finesse it so it was more understandable and user friendly.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So we might lose some of that. But that's okay, right?
Well, I, I guess the question I have is, do we have just one public hearing? I, I mean, is, it's. Per cooperator. So is it just one public hearing here, one public hearing with, or is it like two public hearings?
Yeah, so it would be the Planning and Zoning Commission has a public hearing and then the elected body has a public hearing.
And then how does it go for? So if planning and zoning did it first and then we did it, then does it go over to Ames? To their planning and zoning commission and there, or do they do it simultaneously?
Yep.
I'm trying to figure that out.
Mm-hmm. So what I asked Ames is would your planning and zoning commission and city council? Have their hearings before my, my planning and zoning commission or my board takes action? They said, yeah, they would do that. But, um, yeah, they would, and I, I think Gilbert has to follow the same process too. Maybe Sonia's shaking her head yes or no. But planning and zoning commission and then council separate. So their commission meets twice a month, Gilbert meets once a month.
So can you, when talking about with, with Ames. Is that something that you can write with Ames or is it just them writing? My concern is if Ames writes it and says. You'd like some involvement, I'm all for that. It's how much involvement will Ames actually give you? That, that's, that's a concern I have. They could say, sure, Amelia could be involved, but she may not.
Well, if it's still coming back to us after them. And by saying, Ange, you know, either you accept what we're saying here or you write the plan that you want. You know, if it comes back to us, we'll say, no, they messed it up. They didn't do, they, this isn't consistent with prior agreements and we've got good documentation of our prior agreements. So I'm not too worried, I'm not too worried about that. It'd be nice if we wouldn't have to do that, but.
Um, so I, I would, I would recommend. And I don't, I don't know if, if I'm making a motion or not, um.
This is direction, isn't it?
Well, I think we have to make a motion to give direction. But I would suggest. Changing the designation of the Champlin property. And removing the urban reserve. Right? Urban reserve, I get so confused.
Urban reserve on, on, on Meadow Glen.
Yeah. And changing the Champlin property. Like just get, just remove that. And then, um, removing the urban reserve from the full mile, one ninetieth to one hundred and eightieth. I mean, that's, those are our two big sticking points, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh-huh.
That's what we're down to.
So I guess I would entertain that motion.
Second.
Your mic is off.
I know.
So.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion or do you have what you, what you need from us?
So all this put together a letter for a future agenda, um. It'll probably be in early April. That I get that together.
So the, to send.
To send.
Uh, sorry, I guess I did have one clarifying question. If Ames come backs and agrees. To those changes, do we still want Ames to start the process first or does that not matter?
I, I would say if Ames agrees to those, that we let our planning department go ahead and do. Work on it.
Amelia, how soon did you say you could have that letter?
April. Um, we have the natural resources ordinance going on. I'm on vacation for a week in March and, um. The C and D site RFP, no one responded to, so I have to redo. So.
Mm-hmm. What does that do with the fringe plan to?
Yeah, it does.
Done in April.
It dissolves April thirtieth, so we might have resolution by then. I can try to get it done sooner, but I just wanted to be clear on. The roadblocks to getting it done like next week or the week after. Might be the last week in March, that'd be good.
I was hoping it could be a, just a really simple letter. It wouldn't take very long.
Okay, so.
I could work on it with you.
Okay, so my understanding is you want it to outline no urban growth and Champlin, no urban reserve in Meadow Glen. One eightieth to one ninetieth. And. The information on. They would have to start the process first if they don't agree and work to finalize the plan and have a public hearing and we'll see where we go. That's what you want in the letter.
Last part again, what?
That, that if they don't agree to those changes, we'd want them just to go ahead and finalize the plan and have public hearings, okay? Yeah, I can see what I can do, but I won't be here next Tuesday, so I won't be that agenda. And I won't be here Thursday to post it either. So that's why the fourteenth is an issue.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so.
So, okay.
Moved and seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Peddins.
Aye.
Faisal, aye. Thank you.
Thanks.
I don't know where my agenda is.
We're up to Leanne.
Okay, moving to discussion and consideration of application to partner with U of I's Institute for Sustainable Communities.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, Bryce is going to drive the presentation for me. Um, this is an opportunity to submit an application to partner with the University of Iowa. Um, their institute for sustainable communities that has been around actually since two thousand nine. Um, but this would be the first time that Story County has sought a partnership. If it is approved to, um, submit the application today, um, if you want to go to the next slide. This came up in December, um, when the Go Green team was considering some of the next steps. For, um, where we take our greenhouse gas inventory and the strategies that have been outlined with the Go Green Team. Action plan and we submitted a notice of interest or a note of intent to the Institute. For Sustainable Communities at Iowa. In January, I did have a phone conversation with them and, um, it was. Uh, it was a very pleasant conversation. I was very excited after having that conversation with them. And they encouraged Story County, County to take the next step. So just in summary, um, some of the topic areas that the institute does cover, it's everything from planning, place making, public affairs, engineering. Public art, um, policies, sustainability, nonprofit development. The gamma is very wide, um, and very broad. Um, it is, as I said, been around since two thousand nine, but it covers all the different, um. Schools within the University of Iowa, including the law school, the medical school. Uh, and that's why you see the partnership so broad. If you want to go to the next one. Uh, so the, the, um. The Iowa's, the, in, I almost said Iowa State, the Iowa Institute for Sustainable Communities. Uh, they provide, uh, community, communities, an opportunity to partner on projects that are in, um, very. As I said, multiple, multiple different areas, but we look at fifteen possible projects at a minimum if we were to be selected. Um, it is a multidisciplinary team of University of Iowa faculty and students that would tackle the projects. So part of the information that I placed on your agenda today was the application packet that they submitted to us and the questions that they've. They've asked us to look at. They do select one or two communities each year. And they do partner over the course of an academic year. And at the end of this presentation, I'll talk about the timing a little bit and the financing element. Do you want to go to the next one? First things we need to address if we go forward is just telling our story, um, very simple, um, targeted questions. That's not a real challenge. Um, especially many of us have been here for a great number of years, but then we, um, thank you. Um, we then delve into our different ideas we have. And so for the past couple of weeks, I've been reaching out to elected officials and department heads, um, with different, um, ideas of. That they might have that might fall within the different, with the, the different programs. Um, the guidance from the institute is to one or two projects, three to four projects, five to six projects. They're divided up. Um, what I did is I took all the ideas and I put them into all the categories regardless of the numbers that they recommend. Because we have an enormous amount of fantastic ideas. Um, so for planning, um, something that's actually been our C two C implementation matrix for a number of years is, um. Researching becoming a certified local government and doing historic preservation planning. Um, groundwater protection plans and policy ordinance, climate resiliency action plan, and then substantial damage management plans. And that's tied to our community rating system.
What, what is the substantial damage management plan?
Um, it is looking at, it's a, looking at the properties that we have within the flood plain throughout Story County. Unincorporators of, unincorporated areas of Story County and identifying strategies and approaches to ensure that. Um, if they are damaged by flooding or any type of event, but it is with, within the flood plain. Um, that they are able to rebuild in accordance as meeting the requirements or if they cannot rebuild, addressing that. But then also delving into a little bit more detail, um, how are we going to track those properties? How do we determine when they've reached a substantial damage threshold and that is actually defined? Um, and it's something that I've had on my work program and now planning and development has as well.
So we, substantial damage is a concept in floodplain management where, um. If your property, if your house is damaged, it has to be cumulative, like the thresholds, we have to track that somehow, right Leanne?
Right.
And so if you get to fifty percent, um, over multiple events, then you have to raise. And so if you get to fifty percent, um, over multiple events, then you have to raise your house or move it somewhere. And so the question is, how do we track that? And then how do we help folks understand their options once they've reached that point? Sorry.
Does that?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you, Amelia. Do you want to go to the next one? Um, then we look at engineering projects. We have everything from a culvert inventory. Um, our county engineer Darren Moon suggested this. It's looking at, um, assessments for. Uh, our plans for our historic and other bridges, McFarland shop expansion, engineering, sustainable energy review. We'll see some of these that were in the budget with conservation for next fiscal year. Reevaluate, reevaluating ACPF, that's the agricultural conservation preservation framework. That's our framework for our watershed assessments. Uh, mitigation bank feasibility study, wetlands mapping. Um, design of another quality pilot project like that's the dots and wetland and then septic systems program related aging and unlicensed onsite septic system. So broad gamma of projects that if we're selected, I think any of those, if they were, if we're a department. Would partner would have a very, um, substantial impact on Story County. Law, we get into countywide building code and uniform code research, along with development of uniform property maintenance code for cities and counties. Drainage law, drainage district law review for compatibility with water quality practices. Um, developing policy ordinance to align conservation practices, stream stabilization, floodplain management guidelines. And then a revolving loan program related to, um, housing infrastructure. That's all of our housing action plan. So you'll see a lot of these came out of already adopted plans and policies and approaches. Next one is, um, library and information science. Two items on this, planning assessing, uh, how we digitize our permanent access, assets. And then, um, our records and then deed book scanning. Next one is marketing and branding, um. Really looking at countywide visioning and how we market and branded that. Part of the housing action plan looks at marketing existing programs, so we would have some assistance with that possibly. Lead Story County, looking at building leadership programs for working professionals and youth. And then community countywide newsletter, a template design outreach plan defined. And then GIS, I think you're getting the sense that this is a very broad approach too. Um, reevaluate, reevaluating our LISA, our land evaluation, the site assessment and mapping. County flood risk modeling and mapping, current development projects, interactive map and creating online dashboard. To capture and evaluate infrastructure cap, capacities of jurisdictions. Again, that's from the housing action plan. And then public art, um, really this goes back to our budget discussion too, but functional artwork in Story County parks and buildings. Uh, solar, wind, EV charging or solar or phone charging at least. Then film projects. Um, several from, um, planning and development, but looking at floodplain stormwater management. Story County Parks Historic Places Video Series and then videos on each community. Couple more, sorry. Um, ideas for public affairs. This was one of my catchalls. Um, because some fit in several different areas. Streambank stabilization, best practices guide for property owners. Resident owned manufactured home park guide, childcare needs assessment, exercise design for coop cog. And then matrix for funding requests that are made to the board. And then environmental sustainability resilience projects, um, looking at stormmar, stormwater runoff assessments of our public buildings. And potential, um, BMPs that we could be implementing. Um, again, native prairie pollinator plannings for our buildings, studying solar power for our buildings. And then developing a plan for transitioning to hybrid vehicles or energy efficient vehicles.
And these are just examples of things that could go on the application.
Right, right. Um, and then, well, yes and no. Um, these are all ideas that have been brought forth to me, submitted to me. That I think, uh, given your direction today, it'd be worthwhile to include them all in the different categories. And have further discussion as we, um, if we are selected for further discussion and I'll get to the process here shortly. And then this is a catchall that I'm not going to read, but, um, a lot of these are in existing plans. Well, not a lot of them, most of them are in existing plans. Um. And then the next one, uh, we have some human resources. Apollo, um, approach, projects as well that would fall under that catchall. And this would also be public affairs too. But I do want to spend some time on this. Um, the timing is, um, these materials are due back by, or on March first. Um, cost is fifty thousand dollars and is paid out in three segment, three installments. Twenty-five percent at the beginning of the project. Twenty-five percent midway and final of fifty percent at the end.
Um, Leanne, did you say this was due March first?
Yeah.
Cause that's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow. I know. Yeah, we've had conflicts with getting things on the agenda. Yeah. Um.
Fifty thousand for how many projects?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
And a, a minimum of fifteen. And it will depend on the magnitude of the different projects.
So. If we were to send it in with all of those ideas, do they pick the projects?
No.
We, we pick the.
We, we will pick with them if we are selected. This is even to be, get selected to be a partnering community. Um, and if we were selected, uh, we would still have the discussion whether or not that's something we would follow through with. So this is that next step following the notice of intent is to submit this, um, the response materials. Um. Oh, the timing would be, the projects would go from August of this calendar year through May or June next summer. Um, it matches the academic year. They do extend into summer as necessary to finalize projects. The example they used, if, if we had a mural and they needed to finish painting or students need to finish design. Um, staff time is there's a community coordinator. Um, that would spend five to 10 hours a week that, at the beginning. Um, that meet with the staff from the institute just to make sure things are moving along. But that community coordinator does not, um, coordinate the projects on the county's end. Um, if we're selected, there are project leads for individual projects. So whomever would be the department or office would be the, the project lead on that. Um. Why the amount? It's a financial contribution that goes towards, um, two areas, project related expenses, direct expenses. Again, the, the, the mural example, paying for the paint, stuff like that. Um, and then supporting the programming and administration for the institute. They select two communities a year, um, and they anticipate following the receipt of the materials from Story County. Um, they would have additional conversations and then feed or provide us feedback. And then we can start knowing whether or not we could potentially be selected as a community or not. Um, so this is that next step following that notice of interest. Uh, and I have honestly no idea how many communities they've reached out to. They've done, um. I think over three hundred twenty projects since two thousand nine and partnering with fifty plus communities. Um, but really they've not had a great presence in central Iowa other than Boone County and, um. Maybe been Hamilton County, but they've mostly been around the eastern part of, of Iowa. Um, yeah, this, um, is a lot at you for today, knowing that it's due tomorrow too. Um, but it really is just materials back to them so they can know if they want to take the step forward with us even. Um, and then today is if you even want me to spend that time, I can step forward with them.
Um, I have a couple of thoughts just initially. One of them is that we're at a point right now that we don't know what our budget's going to look like next year. So it can't be a commitment for sure to spend that fifty thousand at this point. Because we have to go back to with budget work sessions and look at everything else that's been asked for, for next year. You understand that.
And this would, I, I, thank you for saying that because I meant to say that I forgot to write down. This would replace or, um, not replace, the monies that are in the budget for climate action planning and climate resiliency planning. Which is seventy-five thousand, I think this fiscal year and seventy-five thousand next fiscal year would not be used. That money would be used for this instead. Again, because the climate action resiliency plan is one of the projects that we've included in this. Thank you for commenting that and I'm sorry I failed to mention that, address that.
Okay. Um. The other issue is that's a whole lot, it's a huge list, that's a great list. But I would be interested in how we would prioritize that. I saw some things on the list that I think we're already spending. Money to have done elsewhere. Our will be like the housing action plan and find, doing that vacant lot thing. We, I mean, that's. You know, we don't want to pay for something in two different places.
I did not include anything that would fall under the consultant for the housing action plan in this proposal. I was very purposeful about that.
So the vacant lot inventory doesn't fall under housing?
If anything was led by a consultant in the housing action plan, it does not fall in here. I went through and checked that. We have certain items, if you recall in the housing action plan, there are staff led with some assistance from consultant.
I see what you're saying.
And those are not, when we've drafted the RFP for the, the consultant for the housing action plan, we've not asked them to take a lead on those items.
Okay, but if we said something's going to be staff led, we shouldn't put it in there.
That would be the point of this. Is they would be doing that, they would be doing the work that otherwise staff would be doing.
Bringing up some staff time, yeah.
Okay, but it's additional funds. It's additional funding for it, that's all I'm saying.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah. We, we did this with the understanding staff would lead that. Now we're looking for paying some money for somebody else to lead it. That's my issue. And, and I'm just saying, those are the kind of issues we need to look at in terms of saying, what are our priorities?
No, I, I agree with that. And I think that's where this is, um, I just, this is a step where we just give them some information. And see if they even want to go further with us. Um, the projects I put that we have in here are not. Uh, they even say then the materials, you're not tied to this list of projects. Something could come up beforehand. That we would prioritize and go, especially when you know we've started our strategic planning efforts too. Ideally, we would have been a little bit further along on that when this came along.
Well, that was the other thing I was going to say is we're just talking about starting a strategic plan and it seems like the strategic plan would be some of. What we would be looking at there. And it seems like we're, our timing, and then we're going to be doing a new comprehensive plan. I think our timing might be a little off. That's my only concern. How do we marry, how do we marry all these plans?
Right, and I'm hoping this will fit some of those gaps too. And some of the things that we, we could be getting done before. Especially climate action plan, resiliency plan, um. A lot of the strategies then Go Green Team. Which was the impetus to even start this.
I like the idea of this. I do have a concern. That it's due tomorrow and really haven't had the time to digest. To type, to digest. If, if you were to submit something and I'm looking at like the application, for example, that says put five or six or three or four, I. Does it matter if you put twenty items versus that?
No.
Are you committing to, if you're awarded to say, hey, we're going to move forward with this?
No.
What is their process then if we back out and they've identified, you know, a couple of communities and we say, oh, we're not going to do it? Do they have like a number two and maybe you can add to that?
No, I think they do, just from my conversations with them. I can ask them that though too, but, um.
Our applying for this isn't committing us.
No.
It's just to participate.
Eligible. Or and then determining where things would fall.
Right.
I'm just looking at my notes. After reviewing the materials, um. University of Iowa Institute will, will have further discussions about regarding the final partner solutions. So who those are and what the projects are.
I would agree. This, this is a lot to digest. At this point, and I know you're not asking for a commitment and we can say no later. But I'm concerned that if we're applying, it gets harder to say no. And I'm not saying I would, but. It's a whole, I'm struggling with how it fits with the strategic plan, how it fits with housing plan. Um, I think, I'm struggling with how it fits with so many other things we've got going right now.
Well, just no, I wouldn't be bringing it forward if it didn't complement everything. That's where I, I, given my history here, um. I was very excited after speaking with them, knowing how many opportunities it would allow us to bring different experts in. In different areas and help move the needle on some items.
So that's the other question I have is just how would this work? Um, we would get this. It's a community partnership. We would get some kind of something out of it. How do they deliver? How do they deliver it? What is, what do we, what do we know about that?
Um, they have students along with professors could be, it, it's going to depend really on the nature of the, the project too. Um, I'll use a mural example. You'll physically see mural. Um, if they do a culvert and inventory as Darren, um, sent me, you'll have a, uh. An inventory of where the culverts are in Story County, a, a spreadsheet, whatever that may be of. Where those are.
Ground then doing that.
They do come here and do it, yes. Yep. Um, if it's a plan, it might be a student presentation under the guidance of professor too. Um, and it might be a, and these are upper level students and graduate students. I should mention that too. So they're not new just into their respective majors. Um, it could be like the, the public art, it could be a, um. A design of what that would, would look like. And then engineered design of what that could look like that we could use to go out for bid on or to get quotes on. It, it's going to depend on whatever the project is, I think.
I noticed that under their topic areas and capabilities, they had diversity, equity and inclusion. Was that on your list?
It is. It, we.
You went, yeah.
It's at the end, um, with, under the human resources and given that we have a committee assigned to that too. Um, we're working on that. I think that's where it'd be interesting to see the dialogues that could come from that.
And we could prioritize things that are already part of. Our plans, like to get things, whatever it is we're planning to get done in the next couple of years. We could have, that, we could make those things a priority.
Yeah, I, I just, this is a wish list of so many different people. That I wanted to capture it all and, and get it. If we went forward with this list so that they may say there's nothing in this list that they can do. And we're not even interested too. Which, uh, looking at the, the number of projects they've done in the past, I don't think that's a true statement, but. We're again competing with other communities too. Um, but they've not done a lot of county projects, so they are in, in that case interested in Story County.
Do they do this every year?
Um, the way I understand it, they do it, they'll select two communities. There'll be four communities over the next two years. Um, they'll select two communities per year. So I think they're receiving, um, looking to like. Time those out for the next, for communities for the next two years. But I think they, uh, but they open it up for individual projects every year too. I think they're maybe changing their approach a little bit.
If we are selected, I think it really behooves us to have a good process and involve a lot of people in deciding the priorities.
Yeah. I would agree with that.
Because, um, we would be spending taxpayer money on it. And let's make sure that if we're doing that, we can justify what is the return on investment to the taxpayer of doing this.
And building on that, even by the time we were to hear, if we were selected, some of the projects are in here. May have already been through a process, having a consultant selected. A couple of the conservation ones are in the budget for next fiscal year. So those would be moot projects anyway. Um, but I did, Mike said to go ahead and include them. Just to show kind of the, the type of projects we have at the county. Um, but I did, Mike said to go ahead and include them, just to show kind of the, the type of projects we have at the county.
Well, I think there's a lot of potential. I just want us to be carefully, carefully plan how we use this. And like I said, make sure that the return on investment is, is good.
Well, I think the fact too, that there is that, you can back out. That, that's the other, is if we move forward to say yes, submit these projects to see if anything's eligible. If it comes back and we just determine, this isn't the right time for us to do that. We're not tying ourselves right now.
Right.
And-
Funding.
How, when do you expect?
Back. If you submit by tomorrow, when do you hear back?
I didn't write that down.
April eleventh.
Remember, like, middle of April?
April eleventh, there are public hearing on the budget, excuse me. So, we will know by April eleventh more of what next fiscal year is going to look like, so that might coincide. You know, if we get back in middle, mid-April, whether or not we're selected, then we can say, well, do we still have money for this? What's, what's it look like?
And between now and then, that gives us time to really kind of familiarize ourselves with the whole program. Answer any other questions that we may have.
Yeah. Yeah, we, and they might just see the list too and say, we don't have anything that fits with this. And knowing the people that are involved, they'll let me know. Okay.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah.
So, I'd make the motion to submit the application to the University of Iowa's Institute for Sustainable Communities.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Heddens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Thanks. Do you mind if we take a two-second break, please? Sorry. I'm just going to pause for a minute. You. Thank you. Next, we have, um, under other reports, discussion and direction on draft capital improvements plan.
Um, actually, today is just for me to tell you, we've come to the point where we have a draft CIP, um, based on the work sessions, the budget work sessions that the board wo- worked through with elected officials and department heads. Um, I am proposing a schedule where beginning today or tomorrow, um, we start the public review period. We will put this on our website, along with the, um, public comment sheet. Uh, I'm seeking some direction from the board. If you'd like me to send this to libraries with the comment sheet, as we have in the past, I will be honest, we've never received written feedback from any of the libraries. Um, but I'll be glad to do that. Um, we'll use a form like we did last year again.
I remember one year getting one comment.
That was last year.
Was that the one about bike, bike trails? That was the only comment I've seen in the four years I've been here.
It's the only comment I've seen.
Well, then I think we know that that doesn't, isn't worth the time.
Um, Bryce knows how to use story maps, and so we can do part of this by putting it online in a mapping format to, to allow people to provide some input based on location. Um, but I would just propose, we put this plan out there on our website, do some social media, um, and that type of campaign, but not send to the libraries and the city halls, because that's just not gotten any feedback. Leave that open for public comment through March thirty-first. On April fourth, you would be reviewing that public feedback?
Yeah. What you said Bryce could do. How much time does that take and how will that get us input that we haven't already received?
It's updating what you did last year. Not that much time.
Did, and we got what from it last year?
We did a different approach last year. Uh, if you'll recall, I did written summaries of each of these projects. I'm not proposing we do that again.
That's what I was getting at. Do not, do, you know, we have done a whole lot of things to get input. We don't get input. It's time that can be better spent elsewhere. That's what I'm saying.
Yep, that's why you don't see those written summaries this year. Um, March fourth, you would review the public input, um, and then the-
March, March fourth.
April fourth. It would be April fourth. And then April eleventh or the eighteenth. It's going to really depend on what the budgeting is going, the process is going to look like. Right now, I have formal adoption on April eight, eleventh, following adoption of the budget. We might push that back a week too. But eleventh or the eighteenth. Perfect. Just direction today, say yes, Leanne. Start putting it out there.
I think that sounds like a good plan.
Mm-hmm.
All right, I will, I believe we need a motion. Do we need a motion to give direction?
Direction.
Okay.
We're just saying yes, Leanne.
Yes, Leanne. That sounds like a great plan. Thank you. Thanks for your work on that too. Um, we have no upcoming agenda items. Public comment number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make public comment and raise your hand on Zoom or come forward to the table. And seeing no one come forward or raise their hand, we'll close public comment number two.
Um, I move, we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Heddens.
Aye.
Merkin. Basil, aye, we're adjourned.